Good night, every single person here. We will have the welcome, Jason, but before we start tonight's meeting, I'd like to invite Ms. Ruhl to bring in the divine environment for us tonight here. Thank you, Ms. Ruhl.
Good evening. Let's stand. Heavenly Father, we praise and thank you for having all of us gathered here today. We ask you to guide our thoughts, control our minds, enable us, Lord, that we ask sensible questions, guide us along the way as you are in our presence, and we also thank you for that. We also pray for traveling mercies for the persons who are here today. Lord Jesus, we praise and thank you. Amen.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Ruhl. Let me first of all make mention of the fact that the Prime Minister will be here shortly. He is on his way already to Luda. But in saying so as well, I'd like to welcome every single person here tonight. We'll start with the ministers here. Honorable Robert Tong, Minister for Tourism. Honorable Rayburn Blackmore, Minister for National Security. And what not, the Honorable Attorney General, here with us tonight. Parliamentary Representative of the Soufria constituency, this Dennis, our good friend here. Our policemen, our cameramen, our visitors. But most important, people of Luda, villagers of Luda, and of course, their environs. But mostly Luda here tonight. I must say it's a pleasure to be here tonight at the continuation of our Tong Hall meetings. And tonight, we are in Luda. As you know, Luda, this is a government of Dominica meeting slash DLP. And we all know what's the meaning of DLP. This is a DLP slash the government of Dominica's meeting. And we're here tonight to discuss government's progress. I'll discuss the Rose Valley in terms of what we have planned for the Rose Valley and what we continue to do and touch on a lot of different matters. So with these few words, I'd like to welcome you here tonight, and we look forward to a fruitful discussion. Of course, at the end of the presentations here, what we want to do is allow you the opportunity to ask us questions, and of course, we'll answer your questions of anything that of concern to you. And we ask that we do it in a respectable and respectful manner. Okay. Now, for me, I will start off first with, for me, I'll start off first with Luda in terms of agriculture. There's a thriving little group here about to be established. I spoke with some of the members about agriculture in Luda. As you know, in the government's program at the It Bank, we have a facility where we have placed $10 million at 3% interest concessionary and of course, a six-month grace period, which is on lending to our farmers. Now, you can lend, as you can borrow as much as $15,000 without security. Okay, these are very, very selfless in that helping our farmers. So those are the farmers here who feel that they have large plots, they want to go on in terms of planting large plots of dashing and different things like that. Have their backyard programs, smaller gardens and whatnot. We also have a program, and we have just received a number of bags of fertilizer from one of our friends, the Moroccan government, and their community, 100 pound bags. And of course, Luda, the Rose Valley, but slash Luda, will benefit from that. And we're looking forward to that. So I would like to urge our farmers here who have formed themselves into a group to let's dialogue and let's make sure we get all the inputs for us in agriculture for Luda. We know the cost of inputs are expensive, this is emerging, but we, your government, will continue to do what we have to do for Luda. We know Luda has been a place long, long ago in terms of coffee production and different things like that. But for those of you in Luda who are farmers, we will work with you. I think I spoke with Mr. Ruhl. And some of our friends, farmers, so we can benefit from it. So that's as far as agriculture goes. In terms of healthcare in Luda, we have a lovely clinic in Luda. Some time ago, I came to Luda, and we had the Petro Caribam sponsored health clinic. I participated in that as well too. Actually, I got my prostate gland tested right in Luda. It was a hell of an experience for me, the second time. No, it's true, it's true. The second time, I've been asked to lay down on a bed and fold myself on a side and having to raise myself, whatever it does, you have to cock up. It was very humiliating, but very important. And I got my prostate gland tested, where the doctor told me my prostate gland was still at the size of a baby, so I felt good. So we benefited from that. We had a pretty heavy crowd there in terms of the benefits of it. And what we want to do now is, I've understood that, I've spoken to the Minister of Health yesterday in reference to that, the concerns raised by some of our people in Luda in reference to the doctor comes up here once every three months. Recently, I had my son come in here as an arrangement between myself and my son and myself in terms of coming here and do some house visits for us, especially some of the older folks who cannot really make it to the clinic, not go to Tong. So the Minister of Health has assured me that it's going to work towards empowering our clinic here in terms of manning it with a doctor who can come regular enough to at least be there. And if we can get one nurse to accompany, well, the nurse will always accompany the doctor to make sure we can have more regular visit because we have a very good building in Luda for healthcare, very good. People of Luda are healthy, you live on the mountain, very cool and nice, you live very long. But at the same time, as you age, we have problems. And I want the doctors to go out and check our seniors in the village to make sure everything is okay. Okay? So working on that one. In terms of small business, all our little shops in Luda, those of us into small business, any sort of small business you have in mind, something that, as you know, we have the Tito Gorge, we have the lake, the lake and the facility at the lake, we have the middle arm falls. We have a lot of different programs in Luda where we can benefit from the small business unit. What I've done tonight, and at the end of the program, those of you who are involved in small business type programs, we have the application forms here where we can fill them out and we can gather the small business people to come up here, and we can put them together so we can look at small business for Luda. Rather than going around and saying we're going to pledge money for you, that's not how we operate. I want to make sure that we get applications filled out, you know, things that are factual, and then your government can partner with you in terms of providing the resources for that. So your small business program definitely will be taken on board. Now, the geothermal project, which is spoken about quite a bit. And of course, as you know, we are moving along with this project. And Luda happened to be the energy node for the geothermal project. The Rose Valley is the energy node for natural energy in the valley. We have the hydro station in Trafalgar as well as in Luda, and all the water that's harnessed goes down there, and we can turn those turbines. We are looking at moving towards, I think our Prime Minister's arrived, I suspect. Anyway. Probably just pause for a little while, the Prime Minister's arrived. Okay. Yes, I'd like us to stand for the arrival of our Prime Minister, Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt. Okay. And of course, we'd like to also welcome Mrs. Skerritt, who's here tonight, the Prime Minister's wife, who has genetics and ancestry from Luda, so she's very welcome up here as well too. Okay, so moving along, we'll touch on the geothermal project just briefly because a lot of, most of the other speakers will touch on it as well too. And of course, our Prime Minister will elaborate a lot on it. But just to make sure we understand the fact that Luda is critical to this project. This is a project that we are moving towards in terms of lowering the cost of electricity in Dominica. We all know how much we pay every single month for electricity, and it's prohibitive, and it can get even worse because we depend on fossil fuel energy. We have to save about 30% of hydro. But if we can put in at least another percentage of it from the geothermal project, we'll be much better, where we can drop those prices. And I want to say to you that we are going about the local plant, government-owned by the people of Dominica. Government and the people of Dominica will own the local plant, so we can control and we can influence the prices, okay? The matter of land, we know, is a very sensitive issue. We respect land seriously, and I want to assure you that your government will never intrude on you in terms of land. Of course, there'll be discussions with the interested persons who would like to, where, you know, we'd have to use some land for that. But the aim is not to pass no kind of pipeline through Luda and displace people. I want to make sure we understand, there's a lot of propaganda going on. We have to make sure we understand that. And your government is not interested and will not be party to displacing all people from Luda. That's understood? Rep program, as you know, when we got into office, the village road was terrible. It was terrible. Some time ago, we were able to obtain funds and material. I think we drive, we're driving on a lovely road right now. Of course, there are a number of other roads that need to be fixed, and we continue to work on them. Taqet, we have worked on it to an extent, and we'll continue on that. We are working on, as you can see, just coming down there, the road to the school, you can see some BRC wire still exposed there, but again, we're going to complete that. The cemetery road, remember the days when we used to take our loved ones to the Great Beyond, and we had to go down there, it was mud. We have done half of it right now, and we plan to bring it closer to the cemetery itself. Yesterday, when we accompanied Mr. Simon onto the Great Beyond, we, at least, we were happy that we could walk on this concrete road. So we'll continue to work on the roads here. We have done the roads by Mr. Davy going down there towards Rock Seas, and we want to go across to the other place by Mr. Laflain's side there. Of course, we have some other little pieces down at, fix up a little bit on Middle East, and of course, we want to take it way down into Taqet. And any road you know of in Luda that we have missed, I doubt we have missed any, but we'll continue to work on the roads. We have approved in excess of $1.4 million for the Rose Valley. And all of that, Luda has in excess of almost half of that for the roads to where we're going to contract a lot of our local contractors to help to continue to build the roads in Luda. Because for us, Luda, we want to make sure that the people in Luda, they're riding on lovely roads. Now, the CBI program, I mean, there has been so much about the CBI program in terms of propaganda and, you know, the way it is described. So we have a, the CBI program position meeting. As I've said, this is a DLP. Understand that? Right. But just to clear up a few things here tonight, we have to understand that we have a number of revenue streams in Dominica, the government of Dominica. We make money from agriculture contributions, from tourism, we make money from taxing people, our people taxing businesses, and we make money from all different sorts of little taxes and whatnot. But the bulk of the money, you have to look at, say, your tourism contributes, but tourism is seasonal, your agriculture continues to contribute, it's helping us, we can feed ourselves and whatnot, make some money from our taxes and whatnot. But the aim of this government here, led by our Prime Minister, Dr. Skerritt, is not to put taxes on the people of Dominica. Every single budget we have gone through in the past, we have always found ways and means of how best we can drop, remove taxes on people and create a better, you know, living standard for our people. But I must say to you people, we have to be careful with that because there's so much we can do. And we have to understand that there's a move right now to destabilize this government, all because of a CBI program, which is going very well for us, very well. And they seem to be mixing matters right now, mixing matters. And I want you to understand that the CBI program is a clean program. Dominica has one of the best programs, if not the best program in the OICS. There's something referred to as due diligence, and we must understand those things. Due diligence means that somebody comes to you, somebody who can afford to invest in your country, and they come to you and they say they would like to invest in your country, and they would like to be part of your country, and they'd like to become a citizen of your country. So you carry what you call a due diligence on them. That due diligence is sent out to reputable firms, bishops being one of them and a few others, where the person's name is cleared, they look at your friends, your businesses, your family, who you transact with, your criminal record, and all different things that are related to your character. If there's anything showing up there that there's a problem with you, of course, you cannot become a citizen or an investor in Dominica. We take it very seriously. And the reason why we take it seriously is one bad apple can spoil the whole lot. Now, recently, you would have heard the opposition talking, quite a bit of nonsense, I must say, in terms of the citizenship program. And what you must understand is, long ago, and I'm sure you saw it, we saw it in the Rose Valley, when you saw those big blue signs with big question mark, you remember that? No, no, you remember that for real? Right. That was a bunch of yeah, a bunch of fellows who are different kind, not from Europe, you know? I don't want to get involved in the white and black business here, but we're all people here, you know? But anyway, these guys were involved with the UWP, especially Ms. Edison James. And the plan was, if he had won the election, which he lost, he would have given them exclusive rights for the whole program. The guys got vexed, he went across the scent kits, they ran the program in scent kits, government changed there, and you know, the Honorable Dr. Denzel Douglas spoke about it, and he mentioned it quite clearly. Now, what we must understand, these fellows are not part of our program. Dominica has about 75% of the market in terms of the CBI programs in the region. And we are doing very well on it, it's generating a lot for us. And we are doing, and when they say for us, we are passing it on to you. Now, the guys are vexed, and they are promised these fellows the exclusive rights. And they are here now, and they're being funded by this guy, is to destabilize this government. Because all of a sudden, you know, this sort of barrage has been placed on our Prime Minister. They're trying to crucify him. And we have to understand that you must know what's happening. Now, we have to be guarded, we have to be mindful that we cannot allow this program to be destabilized. Reason being, Dominica, we are loaded with natural disasters. So what happened, tropical storm America, when it passed, it messed us up, put us back in the dark. If we weren't careful, we'd be in trouble. All your little programs that we are running here, we're not using this money for wages. All the little programs, well, not little programs, you know, the big programs, the funds are coming from the CBI program. It is not the only program where we get our funds from. Going are the days of our traditional friends who can, you know, lend a hand out, they help us, and we have to, we have to make sure we don't forget people like countries like China, Venezuela, Cuba, European Union, these countries have been helping us. But more and more, they have their challenges, so we have to take care of our business. When you have Dominicans trying to destabilize the program, as I mentioned before, like a suicide bomber, he kills himself to kill you, this is what's going on in the opposition. And people, I'm not a man who play games with people. When I come here, I tell you something, it is factual. I'm not going to come here and make any kind of lies on anybody. And you can tell any one of them who want to challenge me on that, challenge me and say it's not true, but I know it's true. So the CBI program, we have to protect it, understand the myths, the lies about it. This government is the only government to date, we have done it right. It was in the time of Ms. Charles, it was in the time of Edison James, they did it very badly. You see what happened to Eli Riverwood, that's a mess. Right now, we have the Kipinski project in Range going on. That's not a white elephant, that's a serious project. And we have another number of other investments in terms of Range. We have Silver Beach about to start, we're looking at Tranquility in the Salisbury area. We have AI in Soufria, and we also have even the Barcotelet. And we're looking at a few more, we don't get too many of them, but we only get a few more, real creative type projects under the CBI so we can push this country. Because we have to create a means for our people in terms of employment opportunities. So people, I just want to clear up a few, there's a lot more we can see on CBI, but tonight is just not CBI only, there are other things we want to talk about. But I couldn't come here and not talk about it because, I'll close with a special thing, CBI related, but how the disruption and the importance of Luda people towards the capital city and the danger of what's coming in terms of the UWP and their plans. We have to make sure we understand things like that, okay? Now, we move on to housing, of course, we know there are a number of young families in Luda coming up. I must say, it's a serious thing, really. I must say to the young people here, you're going to have to make more children. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I'll see, I'll tell you why. This school we are in right now, we only have about maybe 11, 12 students, if all that. Eight, exactly. Now, this is serious. Now, you can't tell me now, whole community of Luda, we only have eight kids. This is frightening. It's cold in Luda, there should be more kids, of course, because it's cold, but for some reason. But anyway, but on a more serious note, if we don't, we have to, we have to replicate more, honestly. I'm not saying that about just breeding indiscriminately, but we have to make more children and to keep the, we don't want to shut down Luda eventually in life, like we want to shut down this school. Because when this school comes to pass a certain level, a crisis level, we're going to have to shut it down. Okay? And that will bring in the other debates we'll carry on there. But I urge the people in Luda, let us make sure we look at our population. And that is where we come in with housing. There are some young families here, some of you, and you're peering out, and you're getting married, and you're starting your life, and you have your mates, and your boyfriends, and your girlfriends. And housing is more and more an issue. But we will look at your housing needs in terms of what hope best we figure we can assist you. We're not going to come, as I said, and pledge money for housing. We want to look at it from a positive point of view, and how we can strategically help Luda. Because Luda is very important to the Dominica Labour Party, and we want to respect that. Very important. Right. Now, in terms of your pit latrine eradication program, I went through a program today, actually. Well, I had a list last week, but I went through it from little parts of Luda. And I've come up with 19 names of persons requiring toilets. Some with zero toilets whatsoever, some with pit latrines. And we'll have a little discussion on that. So there are 19 names, I feel we more or less almost have it together. I think, I don't think we should go more than that. But we have our 19 names, and your names are right here. And we'll definitely move towards how we can assist you with eradicating the pit latrine program. As you know, United Nations launched their program. But the program was launched after the Prime Minister decided he wanted to eradicate pit latrines in Dominica. So you can see, large organizations that the UN, they listen to your Prime Minister. He launched a program here a couple of years ago. And right away, a few years after, the UN, one of their goals would be eradicating pit latrine in terms of enhancing health. So you must see, you have a visionary Prime Minister in Dominica. I'm adding him a round of applause for that. The debate on the community center must end. And what I mean by that is, there's been two schools of thought here. One set would say, well, let us, based on the population of Luda in terms of a few, let us end the, let's stop the school program here, transfer the kids to Tong. We're only talking probably about, as I say, seven, eight kids, transfer them to Tong. Another set would say, let's build a brand new community center for the population, whereas we have this building here, I'm not saying, I am not the one saying that, but I want you all to end the debate on it and decide among yourselves, as villagers, what is best for you. Would you like us to invest money in this building and turn it into a lovely community center? Or would you want us to continue the community center idea? So I would like to say, I've always said that, let us end the debate on that. And let us make sure, at your level, at the village level, let us make sure, villagers' level, you decide what you want, and then we'll partner with you. As you know, we have pledged for a long time now, and there's no criticism of anyone. We have pledged at least 100,000 already, just to give you the sense that we are serious. We did the same thing in Trafalgar as well too. But I'd like you to get serious about it, and let's move forward because we have a few things to do. We have to do it, and we are serious with what we're talking about. Now, in terms of the, I want to bring in a little part that's important. The reason why we had the meeting here tonight at 7 o'clock, and you notice that a lot of the other Dominica, they're looking at 6 o'clock. But I insisted, I insisted with the Prime Minister and my cabinet colleagues here that a lot of us work in Roseau, and when we leave Roseau, we come up here. Some people like to take their little bath, and they come, like, and see everybody here looking well dressed, and I can feel that you're looking fresh, and we are here at 7 tonight. But that is not the point I'm trying to make, and I'm just bringing that up. The important thing I'm trying to say here is, a lot of you all work in Tong because of the proximity to Roseau. And because of the proximity to Roseau, Roseau is very important for you. A couple Tuesdays ago, you remember what happened in Roseau? No? My dear, you made a mistake, you meant yes. A couple Tuesdays ago in Roseau, there was a meeting called by the UWP. And after that meeting, Roseau erupted in flames and violence, and glasses were broken, and people got injured, a few of them got cut and whatnot. I am bringing that up to make you understand the importance of Roseau to the Rose Valley, especially Luda and the rest of the valley. If your workplace is damaged, you are affected. And you cannot work. So you cannot sit idly and just condone that sort of behavior in the capital city where that's your workplace. And I want you all to understand that, anything that's, anything that happens to Roseau affects you. Because you said you wanted to come to meet at 7 because you're coming from work in Roseau. And that is how, that is how I want you to think, you understand that? Now, there's some, there's some, there's some programs being planned again, and we cannot take a chance with what's happening. We cannot sit as a government and allow, and allow, and allow people just come and mash up the place. Because these things can spread into the Rose Valley. I don't want that in the Rose Valley. As a parliamentary representative of the Rose Valley, I do not want anyone setting fire in the valley, not trying to damage anybody in the valley, to affect our lives and our livelihoods. We understand that? And I, I don't want you all I don't want you all at all to condone that. So brothers and sisters, in a nutshell, these are some of the plans we have, I have for the Rose Valley. I want to invite you during the question and answer period to come in here, we can talk a little more about it. I have a serious program running in the valley, and some of you all have benefited from it, which is referred to as the Community Health Initiative. Because of my background and of course, the background of the family, we heal strong in medicine, I find it very difficult, I find it very, very difficult to see someone come to you as a par rep. And they may come for a little housing, they may come for a little something. But then, what I do right away, I analyze the person one time in front of me, and I'll see parts of their body that need fixing because of my background. And I'm not a man who going to come and tell you, I'll give you a few sheets of plywood, two blocks by here, you're going to put a little house there and whatnot. And I'll say to you, you know, something, you have a little problem right there, I'm going to fix it for you. And I've fixed a number of folks in the Rose Valley under what is referred to as the Community Health Initiative, where we look at fixing people's teeth, fixing people's arms. Sometimes you have a problem if your limb is messed up, they're broken or twisted, looking at it from that. Anything related to health, the prostate glands, ladies, if they're problems with their, we are human beings, eh? The men have the prostate gland, that reproductive part of their, so the ladies, they have their breasts and their cervix and whatnot. My type of politics is not a politics to fool you. My type of politics is how we can work on the whole body. So I want to make sure you understand that, sometimes when I approach you, like I approached a young lady yesterday, she met me and she no, no, no. But I want to bring her, bring that power back to her, make her smile and let her the white teeth again. That's what I want to do for people in the Rose Valley. And Luda, you have benefited from it, we'll continue to do it, and let's make sure we keep our business together. So brothers and sisters, just in a nutshell, because we're late, and we have a number of other speakers here tonight on the question and answer pack, I'd like to say thank you for listening, and I'd like to introduce the other speaker, who is Honorable Robert Tong, who is going to address us tonight. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Honorable Prime Minister Roosevelt Skerritt, Honorable McIntyre, Honorable Rayburn Blackmore, Mrs. Skerritt, fellow cabinet colleagues to the residents of Luda and environs. Good evening. As you know, I am Robert Tong, the Minister for Tourism and Urban Renewal. What I would like to say is that the Ministry of Tourism is responsible for tourism. And many of you know tourism is important in our lives. It brings economic activity, and it provides many jobs to some of us. It provides jobs both directly, where we're actually working for someone in the industry, or we have crafts and stuff like that, or indirectly, because we're working in the bank, and persons have business and they bring money into the bank, or you work at a telecommunications company, or you work in a supermarket, you work in a pharmacy, and so forth. So tourism brings over $300 million to the economy of Dominica and much foreign exchange. And many of you here see the amount of persons who come to your area, which is one of the best areas in Dominica for tourism, the valley. The government of Dominica takes tourism very seriously, and we continue to work as hard and smart as possible to improve on our tourism products so that more persons can come to Dominica, to spend as much money in Dominica so that you too can take care of your families. We say we have four pillars when it comes to tourism. We call it awareness, marketing, access, and experience. Under awareness, many of you would know that sometimes persons have mistaken us for other islands. They mistake us for Dominican Republic. They mistake us for Dominica Republic. So we have a lot of work to do to ensure that persons are more aware of Dominica and they don't mistake us for another island. Many of you who use the internet and those of you who even read the news, you'd realize that Dominica is a lot more in the news, not just for the negative, but also for the positive. You see all the beautiful stories of the different places you can go to, the different awards that we're winning because of tourism. Those things don't just happen by themselves, those things have to be planned. So some of the ways that we do that, we have to invite press journalists. And also we have what we call family realization trips. So we bring people to Dominica, writers to Dominica, so they can experience what Dominica has to offer. Then they go back and they write stories on Dominica and publish about Dominica. So all the lovely stories that you see that are coming out in the media all over the world, talking about Secret Bay, talking about, um, Titu Gorge, talking about our Trafalgar Falls and our Emerald Pool. These are specific things that we are doing to try and improve on that. And obviously, the more people who know about our beautiful island of Dominica, is the more they'll hopefully want to come to Dominica. That takes us to the second pillar, which is what we call our marketing. Because you can have a beautiful country, but unless you give messages to say, hey, Dominica is beautiful, come and experience what Dominica has to offer, people are not necessarily going to come. Well, some will come, but if you have a great advert, more will come. It's like a business. If you just open your business and you open your doors, how many people are going to come in? But how much more persons will come in if you advertise your business? So the marketing experience is very, the marketing is very important. In twenty fourteen, Dominica had a budget of four point five million dollars to market our country. It was always felt that that amount was not as, was not sufficient. However, the government of Dominica has felt it fair to ensure that we spend that money wisely and they've allowed the Discover Dominica Authority, which is the department that's responsible for the marketing of Dominica, to have more funds to market, um, Dominica. So in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, the marketing budget was increased to six million dollars and now in twenty sixteen, point five million dollars. Again, to allow us to properly market our country, to encourage and entice persons to come to, um, the beautiful Dominica. But again, even if you just have that money, you can't just spend it unwisely. You have to make sure you target the right set of people. So what we're doing to is making sure that we target the right set of people to come to Dominica. You don't want to put an advert in front of someone who likes a white sand beach and who likes to just party or just likes to shop. This is not what Dominica has to offer. Dominica offers that beautiful experience of nature, of friendly people, of, um, um, great food for persons to engage in. And we, what we do is to try to make sure that when we spend that money, the adverts go in front of these particular type of people. So let me just give you an example. Many times you go online and you shop for a pair of jeans. You shop for a stereo for your car. And then you realize, every week, every day after, you start seeing adverts specifically to the things that you were shopping. You try to wonder, how do they know that? That is called analytics. So what we do also is to ensure that the adverts that we have will go in front of someone who likes what Dominica has to offer. So someone who's all about partying, when you go online over a certain period of time, they will understand your profile. And likewise, that advert will only go in front of that particular type of person. So we're doing a lot of stuff again to ensure, we have all our marketing reps, we were not satisfied with the results from our marketing reps in, in the US, in England and other places. What we did was that we got in new quotations from various persons all throughout the world. And we have now replaced our marketing reps, again, to make sure we put pressure on them to do the right set of promotions for Dominica, to attract the right set of people coming to Dominica, so that all of us will benefit in terms of, um, tourism. We have the other part, the other pillar, which is called access. And as you, many of you know, sometimes it's very difficult to get to Dominica. So one of our rules again is to speak with as many airlines as possible, to speak with Liat, to make noise with Liat when we have to, to ensure that they provide us with more flights coming to Dominica. And just for example, if, if all of you would have realized that, many times at carnival time and especially peak periods, you always hear of persons complaining of not being able to get to Dominica on time or their bags not coming to Dominica on time. But let's think of this for a second. This carnival, we had a lot more persons coming to Dominica. How many persons you saw complaining like they were complaining in the past? So it was much less. So what we do is to continue to work with as many airlines as possible, work with Liat for them to relook at their schedules again, to ensure it's easier to come to Dominica and it's also more affordable. And at the same time too, you also want to come to Dominica the same day. Because the longer it takes for you to come to Dominica is the more money you spend to come to Dominica. So you want persons to come here on the same night. So we also have, take for example, Winair, that will allow you to come to Dominica the same time, all the way from, from England. But to me, the most important one is the experience. The experience is that when that person has seen all those beautiful adverts and they decide to spend their money to come to Dominica, what is most important is the experience that they have when they get to Dominica. And the experience starts with every single individual that they interface with. So the custom, the immigration officer, they have to provide a great experience to the individual. They still have to do their job, but they still have to make you feel welcome. The customs officer, the port officer, the porter, the taxi driver. From the taxi, they go to the hotel, the hotel receptionist. You have to make your visitors feel welcome and you have to give them great, consistent, excellent service. Service can't be good today and bad tomorrow, and bad tomorrow and good the next day. It has to be great all the time. So even if your building is not the most beautiful building, if you have that amazing experience in Dominica. When you come to, um, Titu Gorge and the guy, the tour guide takes you and he tells you the entire history. He tells you about all the plants and he tells you where to swim and he makes sure that you're safe. And he makes sure you get the hot cocoa from the, um, reception center or, or a wonderful rum punch. When that person has that excellent experience, they're going to tell one or two people. But guess what happens when they have a horrible experience? How many people do they tell? So whenever we have a horrible experience, we tell way more people. And as you know, with social media, it is so much more easier to spread a bad story. So it's very important that we give the persons coming to Dominica a wonderful experience. So the Ministry of Tourism, we continue to work, we have many sites. When persons come to Dominica, we are to ensure that the sites have been upgraded. So we have a lot of work being done. We have, um, Trafalgar Falls, which has more, um, upgrades to be done. We have Emerald Pool, which has more upgrades, um, to be done. Those of you who have maybe been there, have seen that the trail, work in those areas. Titu Gorge, we've done some work there, but we still have to continue doing more work in the Titu Gorge area so that it is still a great experience for the person. We have to balance it off very carefully. We don't want to make a concrete jungle. But at the same time, we want as many persons to experience what Dominica has to offer. And even including those persons who are handicapped. So persons on a wheelchair, they should be able to get as close to a site as possible and enjoy to see what the other persons have seen. So we have a lot of work to do and before, once the, um, tourism season, especially the peak season is closed, there'll be more work that we have to do before the new season, um, opens. Many of you here will know that, um, persons can fly to Dominica. But also, yachting is also very important in terms of bringing persons to Dominica. Yachting is important also because the yachties spend a significant amount of money in Dominica. Uh, we have a, 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 a program called, um, the Yachtie Appreciation, we could start it about two years ago. In the first year, we had about twenty-five yachts coming to Dominica during that time. Last year, we had about forty yachts coming to Dominica. This year, we had over a hundred yachts in the harbor of Portsmouth. Again, bringing significant income to the country and allowing persons to benefit from what we have to offer. Even in Roseau, um, not Roseau, but Newtown, at certain times, there were over forty yachts in the harbor, way more than we are accustomed of having. But again, all of these things are being done in a systematic way to bring as much people as possible to our beautiful island. But as I said, we all have to do our part to ensure that security is, is key. And even from a cruise standpoint, we have what we call our own, what I call security, uh, our security team. So many of you who've been in Roseau, especially on the cruise days, you'll see persons dressed in certain uniforms. Again, with a view of reducing, um, issues with, 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 um, with the vagrants and also reducing issues with, um, crime. Because as you can well, uh, imagine, just one incident with someone, somebody stealing someone's chain or someone falling down, just imagine that person or somebody posting a picture of that and the negative impact that it'll have on our country. So we too have all our parts to play to ensure that persons continue to want to come to our beautiful island. We say Dominica is beautiful, it is clean and green. But many times, Dominica is not as clean as it should be. And I was really happy to see driving up on, on the way, how beautiful your sides of your roads were, were manicured and kept. But we all have to do our best to keep it that way and persons have to ensure that we don't throw garbage all over the place. So many persons are cleaning and we're using the National Employment Program to, um, engage many persons to ensure that, uh, not only your area is clean, but many areas around the country are very clean. And I mean, I must say, hats off to all the persons who have been doing a fantastic job in ensuring that Dominica looks a lot cleaner and better for, not only for our visitors, but more importantly for us. We're the ones who are here twenty-four seven. The visitors come for a short period of time, if they're on the cruise, they come for a few hours. If they're, um, stay over, they come for maybe seven days, but you and I are the ones who are here. So we have to continue taking care of our, of our land and ensure that we don't, just throw garbage, um, indiscriminately all over the place. Again, people come to Dominica through the, um, for the cruise. And there's a lot of work that we're doing as a team, not only by ourselves, but with the stakeholders, to ensure that we address all of the challenges that have been there over the years, to ensure that we fix many of those issues. Because all of these little issues, so what the cruise ships do is that after persons go back on the ship, they give them a questionnaire and they score us on, maybe what, thirty-something different things. They score us on cleanliness of our town, um, garbage disposal, vagrancy, have security. You just, even they, um, score us on. And you'd be surprised, Dominica had a very low score for, um, friendliness. And many of us say that, we, we know, we know that Dominicans are some of the most friendly people. But sometimes when you go to the bayfront and you see the way that persons react to the cruise, cruise guests and even to each other. They're shouting, they're screaming, they're arguing. Imagine that you're not used to that type of behavior. When you come and you see that, that is why we get a low score. So what we're doing, we have about eighteen initiatives that we have put in place to ensure that we can fix those issues and we can get better scores. And what does better scores do? The better scores means that more persons will want to come to Dominica and the cruise ships will want to come to Dominica. Recently in, this, uh, two weeks ago, we had our executives who have gone to the Florida Cruise, um, Conference. And I'm happy to see that over the last two years, our scores have begun to get better, which means we just have to continue working at that and we will see better results in the future. Those of you who are in the cruise business, um, if you've seen the, um, the cruise schedule for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we're looking at an increase in over twenty percent in the number of ships that will be coming to Dominica. But all of that work that is being done, we cannot rest. We can't just stop and say, well, now that the boats are here, we're going to go back to our regular means of operation. We have to continue making sure that when persons come here, they have a fantastic time. When we, um, see them, we greet them, um, properly. Even down to the service that they get in the shops, we have to continue giving them great service so that they will want to, will want to come here and more importantly, they'll want to continue spending as much, um, money as possible in Dominica. So the Ministry of Tourism, we continue to work as, as hard as possible. As many of you would know that, um, through the Citizen by Investment Program, which the Prime Minister will speak more on, we have the Kempensky Hotel, which is being built in, um, Portsmouth, which will employ a significant amount of persons, over a hundred and sixty rooms, over three hundred persons will be employed. We have, um, Jungle Bay in, in Sufre, which is going to be about a hundred rooms with over two hundred persons employed. But what that means, even you here in this community will be able to get jobs as a result. Either directly at those institutions or you can well imagine the amount of persons that will now be coming to the island, they'll be coming to Loda, they'll be coming all over the area. And this creates opportunity for many of you and that's why Dr. Mark talked about the small business. Start looking for the opportunities so that you can create income, so that you can begin to work for yourself as opposed to working for someone else. So there are many opportunities out there. Go online, don't just use online for, for surfing the web or, or medevac persons on Facebook. Go online, go to the different cruise sites so that you can see what other islands are doing, that we are not doing, that you can maybe use a small business program to create a business so that you can employ yourself and provide, um, for your, for your family. As you know, we just had, um, our carnival, um, celebrations, which was a definite time success. I hope many of you participated, um, in the carnival. We have our Jazz Festival coming up, um, next month. And we also have our, um, Coral Festival. It's in October, but even like right now, we've already started our planning for Coral Festival because we have to be on the ball with, in a short space of time. We have to see who are the artists are, so that you can become excited and again, person to, to answer them, but I can assure you that we continue to work smart. We continue to work hard to bring as many persons here. We continue to train many people. I, I, I forgot to mention that we even have trained, um, under this, under the CVQ program, we also have what we call master trainers. So any areas that we find that we have shortcomings in, those master trainers will begin to train other persons. And recently, we had twelve persons who were trained in commercial food preparation. Because many times, a lot of us do wonderful, um, dishes, but sometimes we take too long to do it. So we have to learn to be a little bit more efficient because we can't have our guests waiting. So again, thank you very much for, for listening. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer after. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Tong. Thank you very much. And, um, before we introduce Honorable Raven Blackmore, I'd also like to share with you some very, very good news as well too. And I'm sure you remember tropical storm Ophelia when it struck us some time ago. And we suffered significantly down at, um, right at the junction of Provenas there, where we had a major, major edge failure threatening our road to Loda. As well as we had another one in the, um, Baffes State area, just higher up, where we refer to as Center Roma, just there. We had, we had some serious issues there as well too. We're looking at spending in excess of over ten million dollars very soon. A contract has been awarded in the, um, in the Baffes State area. We will look at doing some cutting of the cliff there, putting a, a, a lovely retaining wall there, aligning the road and building a nice sidewalk for the, the students at Community High School. So that's on its way coming, the project has been approved. And right here in Loda, we have a very serious problem here where we could, you know, we could have, we could have suffered seriously where our road could have been interrupted where we can't even come to Loda. And last time I checked, I think that's the only way we can travel to Loda. No, so I mean, I'm very, very pleased to report several million dollars will be spent there in terms of, uh, sort of a, a sort of a edge filler type retaining type of structure and some realignment of the road and cutting into it and, you know, really realigning that road and protecting it. Because a lot of you are probably not aware of that, but we have erosion on the, um, the south side and we also have erosion on the north side. So it's a narrow piece of road there, but we're going to tackle it very soon. So I just thought I'd mention that and we're looking at several million dollars and contracts have been awarded for that program. So we'll see that starting very, very soon and this is facts and truth. Now, I'd like to introduce, um, honorable Raven Blackmore, the Minister of National Security, to address this here tonight. Make him feel very welcome.
Mark, the Honorable Prime Minister and his wonderful wife, good evening to you, to you in a special way. Honorable Robert Tong, Minister for Tourism, my colleague, Attorney General. I want in a special way to recognize, of course, the wonderful people of Loda. I see you're very quiet here tonight and that's not Loda. I am here tonight to give support to a colleague, a brother, a friend. And of course, one can see a son of the soil. Dr. Mark is known by everyone. And everyone can attest to the fact that Dr. Mark is a wonderful human being, isn't that so? So we have to warm up to him. And Loda is a beautiful and wonderful community. I, I have memories of Loda. And good memories of Loda. As, as a young detective in the eighties and early nineties, when, I'm not calling names, when there are folks from the CID came to Loda and played domino in the shop by Mr. Marklin. And I've heard about Rabbit Fest in, um, Mon Prosper. But please, cocker, I'm sorry. But please, Dr. Mark, don't get jealous of that. But I want to say to you, the, the village where I ate the nicest smoked rabbit was in the village of Loda. No other community can smoke a rabbit like Loda. I'm, I'm very serious. And I'm not sure why you're laughing, but it's a fact. I can recall the days of scientific roads coming into the community center in Loda, isn't that so? Those were wonderful and wonderful days. A number of young folks will not recall that, but those were the great days. Dr. Mark and Honorable Tong spoke very, very well just now. Uh, I want to place emphasis on two areas here tonight of significance. One has to do with the whole issue of public order and how it undermines and impacts negatively on the developmental prospects for your community in Loda and from a national standpoint. And, and the second issue, equally important, is the transmission of misinformation and fake information about Dominica's good name and the CBI program. about Dominica's good name and the CBI program. And I want to say to you that no community, no country can prosper in an environment of disorder. No community can prosper when civil community is undermined. This is not about Dominica, this is not about Rizwan Skerritt or Dr. Mark. It's not an issue of political colors, blue, red, or in between. It's a question about Dominica. And Dominica belongs to all of us. And therefore, we have a collective responsibility to ensure that we maintain an environment of peace and order at all times. I listen very closely to Honorable Tong. And Loda has some of the most spectacular tourism sites, isn't that so? I heard about Freshwater Lake. But I can recall as a little boy, young guy growing up, we used to walk in our young days, walking from Maho to the Brew Lake, a wonderful sight also. And walking via the track in Cochran to Midland Falls. So we heard about from Dr. Honorable Tong, sorry, about all the cruise ships that are going to come to our shores and all the yachts and, of course, the prospect for stillover tourists. Do you believe if the international community perceives Dominica as an environment of disorder, anarchy, that those cruise ships on these yachts and the stillover tourists are going to come to this country? For who, therefore, seek to benefit or lose? It is you, the people of Loda, and it's us. So this is about Dominica's good name. And you must never forget, there's only one transcending interest, and that's the national interest. But I want to say something before I go further. Look at the head table. You know, I'm from Maui, you know what I'm saying? Look at the head table and look at our Prime Minister. Does it look to you like somebody's going in here? Does it? There's a song that he goes nowhere, he's staying right here. Because we have to celebrate persons who have made it almost a vocation to build this country. It's not easy to be in politics. Everybody can say anything about being Prime Minister today or tomorrow. But when you get into the office and you're faced with the realities of governing, it's a different thing. And I can say to you, not because I'm part of the Labour Party administration right now, but of course, in these circumstances, therefore, we have done well. Things could have been better, but in these circumstances, regionally and internationally and locally, we have done well. And things can only get better, my dear friends. And sorry for my bad manners, I want to really acknowledge Ms. Charles from the Suffolk constituency. So nice to see you here. Okay? I almost said she resides in Jimmy, but that's not true. Yes. So my dear friends, I want also, because Dr. Mark actually gave an overview of the CBI program. And I want to dispel the notion that it's only one set. You have heard that before, only one set or a select few will benefit from the proceeds of the CBI program. Have you heard that? And we well, fake news. Now I want to ask a question. If we defuse that thing, if we defuse the CBI program, it's not Honorable Skerritt who's going to lose. It's not me alone, it's all of us. So I want us to bear within our psyches that the CBI is for all of us. And in that regard, therefore, I've been able to compile a list of programs and projects funded partially and in whole by the CBI program. And I've put together something, and that's why I'm saying CBI is for all of us. And I want to draw your attention here tonight that the bulk of the projects and programs to be implemented by all the ministries within this government are to be funded for this 2017, 2016, 2017 financial year cycle by the CBI program. And in aggregate, and that does not include, Dr. Mark spoke about the Ophelia project, but that does not include the work that is currently being done to restore the car washway for the carbonless area to the tune of almost three million dollars. That will be funded under the CBI program. So you, the people of Loda, are directly impacted by that. And you're talking about the walls and carbonless one and two to be funded by, under this program. So in aggregate, programs to be funded under the CBI program for 2016, 2017 financial year, two hundred and twenty-eight million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That is what we seek to lose. So that is serious business. So you cannot sit there and listen and for that putting cool point on the Prime Minister, you see? And as you say, you're not in it. The fish of this country is a steak, isn't that so? So we have to take this thing seriously and rise up to a national call to defend something that is geared towards lifting this country up high. And that is important. So I will start, you know, charity begins at home. The Ministry of Justice, Immigration and National Security, four point one million dollars. I will do some highlights in the interest of time of some of the projects. And we're talking one point three million dollars. And the construction of the Inspector's quarters in St. Joseph, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The renovation of the Monbrose building, five hundred thousand dollars, actually, to a school. And before that, we did two barracks, one and two, to the tune of almost nine hundred thousand dollars. That is not We go to the Ministry of Trade, fourteen million dollars. And a major highlight under the Ministry of Trade that should not be underestimated, consistent with the policies and view of the Labour Party to empower the don't shodden on the young people. You're talking about the National Employment and Mentorship Program, what is commonly called the what? NEP, thank you very much. Eleven million dollars where over eight hundred young persons are employed, sponsored by the CBI program. So isn't it for all of us? You quiet? Yes or no? Thank you very much. And this continues, my dear friends. Now, we go to the Ministry of Finance. I don't want to encroach on the Minister's territory. But I want to really highlight a very important program. Well, I want to say it's not for us, the young persons and the ordinary folks, the don't shodden are benefiting from that program, so I'm a mighty. And there are a number of persons who actually experience some misfortune in terms of their health. Think about a single mother giving birth to a baby and that baby was born with a heart malfunction. She doesn't have insurance for that baby, it's not, doesn't have insurance for her health. And she needs eight thousand dollars to be flown overseas immediately. Without such an intervention, that baby would have died. That's why the Labour Party stands for under the leadership of Rizwan Skerritt. So how can we, with a straight face, come into a mic and look at you and lie to you like that? These are the facts, my dear friends. You can go and on page forty-four and if you opt in to page forty-nine on your national budget presentation, you can get the information for yourself. And under the Ministry of Finance initiative, you can recall that fifteen million dollars was given for support to the hotel sector. So anybody in Loda who wants to get into the hotel business can benefit from that initiative. The CBI program is for us, my dear friends. And this continues and continues. Education, you're talking about and supporting this government and our Prime Minister. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Comrade Honorable Blackmore. I think Mr. Blackmore expressed himself quite well here and exposed quite a bit and educated us quite a bit on some of the projects that benefited from the CBI program. Now, we are about to move on to the climax of tonight's event. And of course, our Prime Minister, who is no stranger to this area, probably one of the only prime ministers so far in the history of Dominica, who has visited the entire valley, including Loda, on numerous occasions. Sometimes you don't see him. And why I say you don't see him, he comes sometimes, not on the black vehicles. Comes sometimes casually, driving and he comes here. And how I get to know sometimes, he calls me right away and says, but Doc, you're joking, man. Oh, he can have the road like that, oh, he can have this, that. And forever he does that to me. But I'm saying, yeah. So I would like us to give him a very, very warm welcome, bearing in mind that two of his kids carry the genetics from Loda. His beautiful wife here hails in terms of genetically from this village as well, too. Let's welcome the Prime Minister here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I will say good night to all of you, the wonderful people of Loda. The mic is, this isn't my great, so I have to. Thank you very much. Let me first of all, recognize you, the wonderful people of Loda, and to say that I'm very happy to be here for this evening. And I'd ask Dr. Mark also to schedule the Loda meeting to ensure that I could attend because I really wanted to be here in Loda with you this evening. I also want to recognize my friend, a member of Parliament, Honorable Dr. McIntyre, Honorable Robert Tong, Honorable Blackmore, my wife Melissa, who is here with me, Honorable Charles, a member of Parliament for Suffolk, and the members of the Loda Improvement Committee. I want to raise a few points with you this evening as I want to give adequate time to hear your questions and suggestions and ideas as to how we can continue to improve our country, Dominica, and also specifically the village of Loda, and how we can make life better for your families and for yourselves. But I want to deal with the local matters here in Loda, specifically dealing with some broader national issues. As Dr. McIntyre indicated, very soon, the government will issue a contract, it shall be. And you can always rely on them at any opportunity, any time that you really have to rely on them. And this has been so from creation. Loda has always been very consistent with its views. People, they speak their minds, but very sincere in many respects. But I want to talk to you about the Dominican economy a bit. And one has to appreciate that since 2008, the world has been faced with a global crisis. Many people across the world, including in developed countries, have been undergoing tremendous challenges. But since 2008, there has not been any major improvements in the whole economy. You have seen some growth in jobs in some parts of the United States, yes, but the number of people who are still employed in the United States are in the millions. And these are people who are highly skilled, these are people who are highly qualified with master's degrees and PhDs. But who cannot find a job, not because they don't try to find a job, but because the economy cannot provide them for a job. In United States of America, millions of homes since 2008 have been foreclosed. And people are moving from shelter to shelter because in America, you can't stay in a shelter forever. You stay there for seven days and then the person tell you to stay for two days. And people are moving from shelter to shelter. You realize that countries now are developing a more nationalist attitude, looking at their countries first because they believe that they have to address the issue. So assistance which they provide to other countries have to be cut, have to be reduced. And you cannot blame these countries for doing that because the President of the United States is the President of the United States of America. He's not the President of the world. And so his foremost preoccupation is the welfare and well-being of his citizens. And you see the growing sentiment across the world that countries are looking inward rather than outward and looking at developmental systems. And what does that mean for countries like ours in the developing world? It means that there's been a reduction in grants from these countries, in support from these countries. And it also means that, therefore, that we have to do more for ourselves by ourselves. But countries like Dominica are very exposed economies. Any action taken out of Dominica can have a serious negative impact on our fortunes in Dominica. We are highly exposed and susceptible to natural disasters. We're exposed to natural disasters, all kinds now. And no longer are we seeing disasters, natural disasters, visiting us only during the hurricane season. And a simple trough can cause millions of dollars in damage. So we have to understand that a country raises revenue through very limited taxation, two, loans, three, grants and non-tax revenue sources, such as the sale of lands and in our case, more recently, the Citizen by Investment Program. And I have not met one Dominican who has told me, "Prime Minister, I would like to pay more tax in Dominica." Every single Dominican who would like to pay no taxes in Dominica. Every single Dominican would like to see income tax gotten rid of. Everyone of us in this room would like to see the VAT gotten rid of and that your money is yours and you do whatever you want if it But a country can't run this way. You must find ways of running the country because you have to pay for the security of the state. You have to pay for the education of our children. You have to pay for the health of our population. And in a time when the government is underwriting the cost of medical care for the majority of the population by way of those of you who are sixty and older, do not pay any medical bills at the hospital, and our children, eighteen and younger, pay no medical bills at the hospital. And the point I always make to people is that it is free to those of us who are the beneficiaries. But it has to be paid by somebody. And that somebody is the government of Dominica. And that government of Dominica must find the money somewhere. Because when all of us go to the hospital, if we do not have the medication to give you, it's blows on the government. And therefore, the government must ensure it has the resources so that when you go to the so that when you go to the hospitals, there is a nurse to treat you, there's a doctor to see you, and there is medication that you will get when it is prescribed for you. And medication is increasingly expensive. It's increasingly expensive the world over. And these things cost money. When I look at the cost of just buying a few pins to restore or to fix, you know, the bone structure in someone's leg, some pins that you can put in your pocket. Several thousands of dollars. And this is why the hospital before was not buying those pins, because they were too expensive. And one day I went to the hospital, Dr. McIntyre went to the hospital, and there was a young man there from Portsmouth. Had an accident on a motorbike. And the guy is saying to us, if I do not get this money, at the time it costs 7,000 euros, he will not be able to work. And then they told me that we're not buying these pins because it's too expensive. And I said, but we must buy these pins. Because if there's this money, there's no way he's going to be able to get 7,000 euros to fix his leg. So we have to be doing these things to help the country, ladies and gentlemen. We also have to understand the impact of the closure of DCP that's having on the economy. DCP was the largest exporter of the country. And to remove this very important manufacturer from the GDP of the country will have serious negative impact on the economy, on jobs, on our foreign exchange earnings. So subs that were manufacturing in Dominica, we now have to import it. And which means that we're sending more of our US dollars or EC dollars out to Dominica and creating jobs elsewhere. So we're exporting our jobs. So we talk about, and so when we're talking about the loans and the taxes, and we can juxtapose the CBI against this. That people who ought to know better are leading that particular charge, that the government should use CBI funds for recurrent expenditure. Any minister of finance, any government that will ever tell this country that you use non- recurrent expenditure will run this country into a dangerous road. And this is why we had to find ourselves, having to have gone to the IMF when we came into office. Because the United Workers Party, instead of telling the people of Dominica the truth about the state of the economy, they want to borrow money. They went and took social security money, and they were not paying the deductions of the public servants to the DSS. And anybody who's running a business, and anybody who's running a country, and you have to resort to borrowing money or printing money or using non-tax revenue to pay recurrent expenditure, something is wrong. You have a small business. You have a shop. You have to pay yourself a salary. You may have some money helping you. If you're not making enough money in that shop, and then you have to now go and take your little money from your private savings every month to pay that person, you need to sit down and review your business operations. Something is not going on right there. And therefore, because you have to understand the CBI, while it is doing well for us now, the government fully understands that there can be, something happening in the world and the CBI comes to halt. Or there can be a dramatic reduction in the in the amount of money that we get in every year. So we're not unmindful as a government of those realities. So when you go and you, and things that you have legal obligations for, and you go and you peg it against something like CBI funds. And then you say, okay, well, I'm going to raise 300 million dollars because I have to pay increases of salaries with CBI funds. And then it crashes. Instead of raising 300, you raise 3 million. How are you going to raise the 297 million dollars to pay the recurrent expenditure? Taxes. And how many of us, how many of us in Dominica can pay more tax than we paid already in Dominica? I make noise to the government every day about how much tax I pay. I say, I work so hard and before you give me a salary, you're taking so much money from my little salary. I do make that because I'm a public servant, do you know, you have to make noise too. So if you're talking about increasing salary, the first person that should give me the increased salary is the prime minister. But the reality is, the state cannot sustain these things. So this is why I am saying to us, ladies and gentlemen, that I think the time has come in Dominica for us to have a conversation with trade unions in this country. Let me say to you, my dear friends, first and foremost, that I am all for trade unions motion and protection of the rights of workers. Every union must seek to get the best for their workers that it possibly can. So I am not at odds with that. Because I was always a prime minister. I was a teacher. And I understand the need from time to time for us to demand improvement in our working conditions. I'm in or not to distant past, when trade unions in preparing for salary and wages negotiations would arm themselves with facts, facts related to the performance of the economy of the country. And specifically, the earnings of our country. We cannot pay more than we earning. An employer who is making 5,000 dollars a week cannot go and commit 6,000 dollars a week. And that's the reality of it. That is business management or business administration 101. You can't pay more or spend more than you're making. So let us understand from the outset that when all of this talk is over, the government can only commit to what it realistically can commit to. Because if the government commits to more than what it can realistically commit, somebody must pay for it. And who are the people going to pay for it? We. Because no country is going to give you money to meet your recurrent expenditure. It must come from what we are generating, what we are earning in the country. So I want everyone in the country to know and understand what is practical and what is not. What is possible and what is not. So I am proposing to convene a session to deal publicly with the issue of public sector wages and the realistic capacity of the government of our country. And I've indicated to my financial secretary, my willingness to facilitate a meeting of the entire social and economic partnership in our country. We need to sit around the table and examine the facts and reality. And I will, I'll be certainly sending invitations to all of the stakeholders, trade unions, worker organizations, employer bodies, leading members of the civil society and senior public officers, the churches, to join the cabinet of ministers in a serious and focused sit-down meeting in which we set forth in clear and succinct language the workings and the realities of the Dominican economy. And that consultation will take place on April 24th, 2017. Because as the prime minister of the country, I want the best for all Dominicans. The workers are entitled to the best possible package. But so are patients of the PMH. So are the retirees, the poor and indigent, and the less fortunate among us. Our seniors. They all deserve a better way of life in our country. We have a duty as Dominicans to be fair and reasonable and to ensure that no sector is advantaged many programs which we impacted upon. And I am saying to the people of this country, I am not prepared to deny the seniors 17 and over from the little pettance that the government is giving to them in a recognition and gratitude of the hard work they have done for our country. That I am not prepared to stop this school transportation program to ensure that every one of our children in Dominica can get to school and get to school on time and learn and become something for themselves and for the families of our country. And I'm not prepared to cancel the granting of free medical care to children 18 and younger and seniors 60 and over. I believe that would be a dangerous time for our country to consider these benefits that all people are receiving. So I look forward to a very focused and sincere and transparent engagement on April 24th, where all the facts shall be laid on the table and all the facts shall be examined. And my hope and prayer is that each one of us will have a better appreciation for our responsibilities to our country. Because as the prime minister of this country, I am not prepared to take reckless decisions. I've never, I have been always, I've always been responsive to the needs of our people, but also responsible. And small economies like ours, I always say to people, no matter where I speak, that small countries like Dominica, we must maintain very strict fiscal policies. We do not have the elbow room in our countries to take this kind of risk that people want us to take sometimes. Because any risk a government takes, any gamble a government takes, when that gamble fails, when that risk come to pass, somebody has to pay for it. And you saw how much you paid for the recklessness of the United Workers Party government. The heavy weight to impose on you, where to send people home, where back to a sound footing. And those of you who want to go back to those days, tell me. But I can tell you, I do not want to go back to those days at all. Because they were difficult years for many families in our country. Many families saw hard time doing the austerity program. So I want to, I want you to understand is that while the CBI might be making money and doing well, it is not, it should not be used for recurrent expenditure. What we're using the funds for is to set the economy on a sustainable path. Invest in agriculture, invest in tourism, invest in education of our children, invest in infrastructure to attract further investments, to make our country safer for ourselves and for visitors. Ensuring that the people, the young people who are seeking some jobs and who need their experience, sustaining the NAP so that the number of young people coming from universities for high school and so forth, who need the experience, can get a job for a period of time until the economy can absorb them, until the employer where they're working can absorb them and let them be permanently employed. These are the things we're seeking to use the CBI to for. We'll be investing in the manufacturing sector to provide concessory loans to the manufacturers and the agro-processors in our country. So that we can have more things in larger quantity to export and thereby creating jobs, bringing foreign exchange to our country, expanding the economy. That's what we're using our monies for. And that's what monies like the CBI should be useful. It should never be used for recurrent expenditure in any sustained manner. We use the CBI to reduce our external debt. So the more we repay our debt faster, is the more money we have left to be able to do more things for you, the people of Dominica. But anybody who's advocating using the CBI funds for recurrent expenditure is suggesting a dangerous thing to the country. And if a government does that, our promise is that it is not being genuine to the people of Dominica. I also want to speak to you briefly on the geothermal project. And first of all, I want to thank the residents of the Rose Valley for the level of engagement which you've had with the government on the geothermal. You have asked very sincere questions, very upfront questions. And we appreciate that, because it is through dialogue and consultation, there'll be a better appreciation for what is being done, how it's going to be done, how it's going to be financed, how it's going to impact on our lives, and how it's going to benefit us as a country. And on the issue of your lands, let me make it very clear to you, my dear brothers and sisters, and I give you this solemn promise. That this government is not going to take any, in other words, the government is going to impose itself on any land owner in Loda. If the government is going to require to acquire land, I give you the assurances we shall have. First, a private and personal discussion with you, the land owner, to tell you about your particular situation. And I have said to the cabinet, I am prepared to lead that process of engaging you, the land owners, 101. So you understand. I know some of you have lands, but you do not have the titles to it. I am saying to you, the government will treat you just as if you had a title for the land. Once you can establish some kind of ownership on this land. So you will not be treated differently. So I do not want you to go in about with any fear, my dear friends. With any fear that this government is going to take your land and pay you five years. The government will pay you almost immediately after discussion with yourselves on the acquisition of your lands. And will come back to you and let you know as a community whose lands you will need, how much you will need, where this should be passing, how it will be passing there, how it will impact on you, my friends and so forth. So let us understand. Don't let anybody come and give you the impression that the government is going to take the whole of Loda and all your houses and all your dishes that are going to go and you're going to put in the vehicles and so on. I mean, I don't mind you come to the vehicles. But this is not the case. This is not the case at all. This is not the case at all. As a matter of fact, in consultation with the experts, we're doing everything possible to minimize on the amount of lands we will need. And Gary can tell you so. Gary is in touch with the people. But let us not underestimate the value of the government pursuing geothermal. If any one of us here who have a home and who have a light bill and we're satisfied with the bill that Dominica is giving us, I'll go out to my own vehicles. But I can tell you, as a homeowner and someone who pays his light bill, it's too high, my brothers and sisters. And I'm handling my home in vehicles and so forth. When I get my bill, I say, but which light on? What happened in there? And we should not have to make the choice between our comfort of having nice in our home and buying food. But we can only approach the reduction of our liabilities in Dominica by using other sources of energy generation. And all of the experts have said to us that the geothermal can see a reduction in our light bill in Dominica. As a matter of fact, if you read the Article 4 consultation report by the IMF, they are strongly urging the government of Dominica to pursue the geothermal project with haste. Because in their own analysis, that will have a major positive impact on private sector business and operations in our country. And if private sector operations and corporations can reduce on their operating costs, then they'll have more money to further invest and thereby creating more jobs in our economy. So let us work together, my dear friends, on this very important matter for economy. I know some have come and told you where you should pursue solar energy. That's fine. But how many of us in Loda or in this country can afford the capital cost of investing in a solar panel for homes? I wanted to put my home in solar vehicles. Well, when they get the quotation of how much I'm going to have to pay just to put these batteries on these things, I decided, well, look, I'll stay my Dominica still. It's a huge cost. It's a huge cost. And then every so often you have to replace the batteries. So it's not even a one-time thing and for individuals. It's a huge cost. And why did geothermal every single consumer of electricity in our country? So I want us to continue to support this, ladies and gentlemen. One of the things I want to talk to you about is, you know, we have political parties. Like we have religious organizations, religious denominations. like we have religious organizations, religious denominations and so forth. And with political parties, there'll be people who will support this one, there'll be people who support that one. But why, why should our country, why should our country have to see everything through all political lenses and so forth? I'm not saying to people, even if, even when you're going to buy a sandwich, man, I want to put politics in the sandwich. And then we have become, we've become so blinded by this partisanship that even if this thing is benefiting us, we will say it is bad. And I just find that we are wasting too much of our energy, too much of our time fighting each other over politics. Everything is politics and this thing is consuming everyone's lives. I mean, I'm a leader of political party, I can tell you, I don't talk politics every day. I don't talk politics every day. There is a, there'll come a time when parties have to fight each other and banter each other to see who is going to make a greater impact on the voters of the country. But we must not allow this to be three hundred and sixty-five days times five. That to the point when you go to a place, a government department or somewhere in the private sector to get service, they treat you based on who you support or who you don't support. But I always want people, you know, you see me? I treat people the way that I would like to be treated, my friends. I treat them the way I like to be treated. And and humility has to always be at the forefront of what you do or speak. Because I always understand that I am not meant to be Prime Minister forever. And none of us in our own station in life must use our position or whatever it is to impose on people because of particular beliefs or lack thereof. Because life is a boomerang. What you send is what will come back and get you. And those who want to be negative and those who want to destroy the country, believing that the only person in this country will be affected is Ruzlo Scari, I am telling you, my friends, you live in a fool's paradise. And what is, what is really, what really pisses me off with some people in this country is that people ought to know better. People who spend all government money and their money to educate themselves are engaging themselves in foolish talking, Dominica. Way, what, way, to what, to what's benefit? Folks believe that when they mash up the country or they mash up the roads, then the only person who can't pass is Scari. The last I checked, you know, I was checking to see, I have no helicopter. I had to drive to Loda. I drive to vacas and so forth, we didn't want to bridge the market street. Wash the way, I can't, I can't, I can't cross. So we, there are times that we have to look at our country and do what is best by our country and not what is best by our political party. So those of you who like to see what's happening and so forth and believe that there is a benefit to be gained by this, I am here to tell you, you're fooling yourself. You're fooling yourself. And when you, you see me, I have no high blood pressure, you know, my friend. And I don't forget it, you know. So those who want to have also hatred in them and anger in them and so forth, my friend, I have no hatred, I have no anger inside of me, my friend. None. And I mean, if my joy is so soon, my high blood pressure should be high. But none. Normal. If I drink a cup of strong global coffee and check my pressure, it's still normal. So let's understand, my friends, this. But not understanding all of the machinations by some. I do not have the focus on what I am doing for the people of Dominica. Because my my commitment to this country is to ensure that every single individual, every single family can enjoy a better way of life. And that can only be achieved if we all work together. If we all work together. And, and you know, another thing that really pisses me off in this country, the people tend to forget where they came from. And then when people come to get help from the government, they look down on the people. But master, but brother, I mean, if you, the government didn't send you to school, you wouldn't go to school. So why are you forgetting that? And why are you grudging somebody who is getting a scholarship, what's this in the government today? You know, some idiot came to the financial center today and filmed the people waiting to see the Prime Minister and scandalizing people. My friend, you who do that, that woman who do that, God will punish you for doing this. Because you mustn't forget the biblical principle, you know. When, when, when the elders and the disciples were sending the children away and Christ didn't come back? And when the disciples were saying, look, we only have, is it two loaves and five fishes or two, five fishes or two? I never could remember these things. Five loaves and two fishes. Am I not correct now? And the disciples say, look, master, we don't have enough to feed the people. We don't have enough to feed the people. The principle is, it is from the little that you have to help people, not from when you have abundance. And when you feed people from the little that you have, God blesses you. So the disciples now, the disciples now had too much to eat, too much to eat after they have fed the multitude and so forth. And that's what we try to do. Because I understand that in many respects, if the government does not intervene in the lives of some people, they would have a difficulty in surviving. So now because you are who you are today, you have to forget that back then you used to go to a government to help, to get help, and you got help. And they film you, talk, talk, talking for long days and so forth, see them, look at them. I don't have time for this, I don't have time for this. I don't have time for this and so on. But I'll find out who the person is though. Now on health, my friends, I am, I am very worried about the health of our citizens. And I have been speaking about this for a very long time, almost alone voice. You know, telling our people that we have to watch our lifestyles and so forth. We have to exercise, we have to eat right and properly and minimize things like diabetes or contracting diabetes and hypertension. This thing is causing havoc in our society. And, and with the prevalence of cancer and the high cost of our medical services. The doctors today, no offense to anyone, some of them, unless you don't pay them before you're getting any service. One of the days when a doctor would consult you and tell you, okay, pay me when you can, but now you have to pay them before, 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 before they even talk to you. So while the government is building the national hospital, a hospital that some state would never happen, a hospital which some state was alive, and even while they see it building, they're still denying its existence. But we're very pleased with what's happening. We're very excited about it because it will certainly assist the state in providing better and improved healthcare services to our citizens. Because it is our hope that with the construction of this hospital, we will have to go out of our country to seek medical attention. And while we're building the hospital, we've also started the program to train our people in specialized areas so that we can have the requisite qualifications or qualified people to provide improved and increased healthcare services to our citizens. So we are very grateful to the government of China for underwriting the full cost of this, which is in excess of forty million United States dollars. And based on the schedule, we expect the first phase to be completed by August of this year. And we're recognizing the prohibitive cost of healthcare, not only in Dominica, the world over. The world over. The prohibitive cost of welfare, of health services. We are launching on April the third a pilot health insurance scheme to target single mothers, children and babies and so forth, and expecting mothers, because recognize that is one of the most grouping in our society. So we're starting with this grouping on a pilot basis and the hope is to study how it's going with the intention of having a national health insurance scheme for Dominica. And under this pilot program, which has been underwritten by the government with five million dollars from the CBI, and we've already entered into an agreement with the social security to manage it on our behalf, this facility will cover eighty percent of the medical costs of those who are covered under the pilot program. And this will not only cover your local costs, but those of you who have to travel overseas to seek medical care. And we believe that is an exciting step. So while we're doing these things, we are, we are citizens must ensure that we do things to minimize our contracting illnesses and so forth. So exit for a day and walk up the hill of Loda and I will take the bus to go back to work next morning and so forth. And you'll save your money. You'll save your money, save your gas, save your wear and tear in your vehicle. And certainly you will feel much better as time goes by. My final point, my final point has to do with the issue of productivity in our country. I am of the view that we have to do better in terms of productivity in our country. Because everywhere I go in the world, and when you meet people, they tell you Dominicans are the hardest working people that they ever met. You go to Antigua, you go to Saint Martin, you want to get the cruise ships. They tell the Dominicans they're the hardest working people, and I believe so. But sometimes when we in our own country, we take things for granted. And therefore, we have to be more productive. And I'm getting complaints from some of our employers. And some of the doctors, and they may take offense to me, they may take objection to me tomorrow morning, but that's, that's fine. We are too liberal with the granting of sick leave. And it is, it is on productivity and the economy. Because what's going to happen is that if the employer is losing money by way of sick leave, he's going to have to reduce on his staff numbers. So I want us to, if you're sick, you're sick. So I am not here to question, if you're sick, you're sick. But my friends, if you're not sick, don't say you're sick. And if a doctor is giving you two weeks sick leave because you have a little headache, tell the man, boss man, I don't want two weeks, I mean, give me two days. But it's almost as if, when you go to some doctors, they ask you, how much leave you want? How much leave you want? I, I, I hear that, that's true, Oliver. How much leave you want? One week, okay, two weeks, okay? I say, well, you know, boy, I have to go to Saint Martin next week, you know, but you know, give you three weeks. So while, while it sounds laughable, it is a serious matter. So we say, we're here, you know, speaking frankly, we need to address this. Because in small countries like ours, it can have a serious impact on job creation in our country. So I put you up towards for some national discussion and to say to you that this is part of democracy in action. Government going out and meeting the people and hearing from them and they hear from the government and engaging ourselves in a discussion. This is about a discussion. And so I look forward to your, to your questions. Only thing I want to question, to say to you, ask me the easy questions, ask these guys the hard questions. Thank you, thank you very much. And all the outstanding roads, Dr. Mark, you know, we need to do them. And we need to have them done before independence, you know, let's get all the roads. We're done, all of them. You know, we need to complete them, the little piece coming down by the school that needs to be done, you know. My friend towards the bar, I see her back there, we need to do the road going towards the the Tito Gorge there, you know. I'm gonna show what Baghdad is, Baghdad, do you? Middle East, Middle East, I have not, Middle East. Middle East. You understand? So we need to do, we need to do have done some work, but there are still a few roads to be done, especially access to some private yards and private homes. Because some of you have some really nice yards and you have to drive in from the main road and so on. We need to help, we need to help improve the infrastructure in this community and so forth. And we're fully committed to providing the funds to it. We just need to be a little more focused and attentive to it and address them once and for all. So thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you very, very much, Prime Minister. As we will realize, that our Prime Minister gave us a talk from his heart. I think very, very good speech and very personal, touching, everyday type matters. And I'll share one thing with you before we open up for questions as well to, is the fact that he has said to me that he will not allow the politics in Loda to be just left like that. When we get out of the way, which is simple for him, how we can help Loda. He took care of that and he pledged at the end that he will look at all the roads in Loda. He has mentioned to me that definitely he wants you all to walk and drive to your home. So I'm saying to the people of Loda, well, you're not taking him for granted at all because he has not taken you for granted. And I'm his representative on the ground here in terms of the party. So I want you, let's work together, let's appreciate what the Prime Minister has said to us and what he can do for Loda because Loda is very important. I'll say boldface to the Dominica Labour Party and the government of Dominica. Okay, brothers and sisters, now what we're going to do now, we're going to open up for some questions. It's about, my watch is about eleven past nine. We started at seven, I know you like to start later, but the plan is not to keep you here for the whole night. We'll take five questions at one time. I'm urging the folks here or people here in Loda, let's look at one question per person. Maybe not everybody wants to answer a question, but we'll take five questions. We'll answer you truthfully, we expect you to be respectful, well, most of you are for sure, I know that. We'll take five questions and then we'll answer again. And we have the first question from Mr. Maglaw.
The Prime Minister is on point. The Prime Minister, our good friend, our Minister, and Dr. Clarence McIntyre and Mr. Blackwell. This is very important, our good friend. My first question is, I listened to the Prime Minister very attentively and I hear about when he said about if you're working and you're concerned with your life, but I still want to add something for my people in my village. Because what I've noticed now, people want to come to work at nine o'clock to give you a day's work and they stop at half past one or one o'clock and they want to charge you sixty dollars. That is unfair. You cannot come to work at nine o'clock and one thirty, one sixty. You cannot come to work at nine o'clock and one thirty, you want sixty dollars. That's question number one. Number two, I'm coming to the Minister for the tourist industry. You have your job too, it's not the Prime Minister, and I will tell you why. As you seen, I'm Ralph Maglo, Commonwealth of Dominica, Loda. And I travel on that side, especially I will say, every day, as long I don't feel into back my sickness. And when I'm going on that side, I, every day I meet tourists. Especially when you see during November, December to reach on like January, February, I always bring some foods and I wash them clean. And any, any bus driver, I'm the tendency with this stuff, Mr. Ralph Maglo. And I offer tourists and I all, all around the world, as you seen Ralph Maglo here. I run and taking out my picture. I'm interested in the tourist industry. But I wanted to say something tonight for my village. When you're going to the power station before you take that road to go down to that portion by the church here, on the government school. I notice I just feel embarrassed because people have to have consideration to make sure which is a chocolate thing rubbish. Put that aside or build a bunker, put it up for dog not to spread that, that is not cool, that's on the road. Because I'm feeling embarrassed when I'm speaking to some tourists and to see the people on going to Tito Gorge by the power station, how they keep that side. I'm ashamed, Prime Minister, if you have to go on that side to see that for my village. But I can boast, when you're reaching the bus stop and you drive to my area, they call you Middle East, you can close your eyes, nothing are going to disturb you on that road. Because I make sure, I make a part of duty to make sure it is clean because your cleanliness make you always feel happy. But when you breathe the air, it is going inside, it going to set a compound in your stomach. And second name is the Prime Minister. I see looking here, I see my last plot of fruits are of the power station. I was there once, the site media, it tells me the king of Saudi. But what I would want to know from you now, if you're going to inquire that and hire up the power station to go close to the geoformal, I would like to get a response because now I cannot work, but I'm paying people to do my work, clean a farm for me, and right now I pursue a thousand plants, paying people to because I notice those things on those shelves don't keep us healthy. But what you plant and you can make sure to prepare your meal or your breakfast, you always feel healthy. So I'm telling my people, Loda, especially we have soil, we can make sure supply the market much less for here. I, I don't want to see them going to supermarket no more again. Start to plant and for us to have a healthy nation, because I'm not afraid to say, I'm eighty-two years of age and look at me.
Okay, Mr.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Pleasantly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maglo, excellent presentation there, thank you. Okay, we'll take question number two. Although Mr. Maglo gave us about ten so far. That's fine. Anybody else?
All right. Yeah, good evening to everyone. It's good to see two of my former teachers here, Mr. Scarry, taught the English at the Clifton Deputy Committee College and Mr. Blackmore taught me sociology. So I say good evening to you all and everyone here. My question, a very, very simple one, Mr. Prime Minister, you mentioned about the chronic non-com可以直接 diseases and health. I work in retail, they might hear me all the time on the radio. One of the reasons why people buy, um, stuff that's bad for their health is because of the cost. For example, orange juice. People might look for orange juice, they might see orange drink on the, on the supermarket counters and see it cheaper. Why would I buy orange juice, for example? But orange juice, which is hundred percent juice, if no sugar, attracts a hundred percent duty. The juice drinks, sodas, for example, is twenty percent. So people always think about their pocket and it always transfers back to your pocket. So if it's cheaper to buy the unhealthy stuff, why would I buy something more expensive, especially when things are tight? So I know that, um, the D I C, we at Fine Foods did it, rule of recommendation to carbon, so I want to know whether, whether there's any consideration for reducing the duty on one hundred percent juice, if no sugar added and no preservatives? That's my question.
First of all, I have to say good night to my PM and all the ministers and everyone that is included there together with the good night to the first of all, I have to say good night to it's something wrong with the mic, not me. Good night to everybody. First of all, I have to say good night to my PM and all the ministers here tonight and everyone included with the minister. Now I have one question, but I have something to say first before the question. Since I didn't get my prescription glasses, up to now I don't have one. I would like to know if I will get my toilet, my bathroom and a little house to live, please? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Good night. To the, especially to the Minister of Tourism. I work with the, with the, with the tourists for past twenty-eight years. So I know normally every day, every day I see tourists, every day I work with tourists. So I talk to them, they talk to me, you know. So what think go to my head, you know? So if we could do something, either the community or the, the, Mr. McIntyre could help. Now, we could plant flowers from Tralfalga Junction to reach to Tito Gorge. Because every day we just see tourists, you know, and what do tourists like? Nice, you know, flowers. So it's up to you, if you could help or you could, you do something, you know. So from Tralfalga all right through, because the road now is both side and it will clean and nice. We have a large road, we could plant all different type of flowers. So communities help, anything to go to something, you know.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome in the Prime Minister, my cousin, nobody, his wife and everybody at the head table. Um, my question is, um, when is the Ministry of Agriculture coming with the Loda populace like this to have a meeting? To channel the way forward to see what crops they can grow? Because I observe that agriculture, growing of crops in Loda is on a decline. And, um, the second question is, um, speaking with regards to geoformal, what plans the government have to open another existing road? Let us say joining Loda to Tralfalga. Because we observe that fruit, um, um, climate change, um, rainfall, the roads are slipping, especially on the precipice side. And if we notice on the other side of the terrace, that's where people really reside. So what plans the government have to open that road from Loda to Tralfalga? As a substitute road is something dangerous would happen? And let us propose that the road from Povitas would slide in, let us propose that.
Okay, thank you very much. What I'm going to do, the Prime Minister addressed some of the questions. You know, I'm standing here, just gonna address two of them fast for you. And the, in terms of the, um, the beautification program Mr. LaFleur mentioned, I've been speaking with, um, Mr. Rule, Aaron Rule, and we've been looking at, you know, maybe very soon from now in the next financial year, where we can engage a lot of the young folks in Loda who are still, and ladies of course, who can help us with that program. We have a similar program in Tralfalga already. What we have done there is during the, um, off season, when the cruise ships go off just now, in terms of the off season, I'm happy to hear Robert Tong mentioning that we have a twenty percent increase. All the vendors involved in the, um, tourist, cruise program, vending by the tourists, we engage them on the, on the roads and they had a plan. So we want to do a sort of a, a joint partnership between Loda and Tralfalga and we can accomplish this mission. So that's a very good point. And the one asked by teacher, Richards here, in terms of the agricultural program, we met, we've been talking with the, um, Mr. Rule, and he has mentioned to me that they are from the group of agricultural farmers and I'm urging the group to get organized because we can provide the inputs for you, the fertilizers, planting materials and bring up the ministry here, but you have to be, you have to be organized. We cannot bring the ministry to Loda for two. Yeah, so if we have a farmers group here, I think it's organized, let's get together and the Ministry of Agriculture, from the Minister of Agriculture to come to Loda so we can discuss. Because we have a lot of inputs here and as you know, the Prime Minister is a farmer. I do farming as well too, so there's something in our hearts. Okay, thank you very much.
I mean, very, very important questions have been asked so far and, um, the, the working hours which Mr. Maglo mentioned about is a, is a major issue for the country. Because that's one of the major challenges you have in agriculture is farm labor and the cost of farm labor. And when you have to compare how much we pay in Dominica to what a country like Ecuador pays for a day, from six to six and, and what we pay for a few hours, it, it is a significant difference and, and, and Dominican Republic. And if we're gonna be trading on the same market, um, we can't compete the price because their labor is much more cheaper than ours, one. And the hours of work is by far, um, more than, than ours. So it's something that we really need to have a discussion in this country. Because that's what, that is what confronting, um, agriculture in many ways and productivity nationally. This point I made earlier about the productivity in our country or the lack thereof. We need to really take it to a higher level. Uh, if we're, if we really want to see the kind of growth in our economy, productivity of labor must certainly be increased. So it's, so it's a very important point that, that, um, that we have to mention, we have to pay attention to. I agree with you entirely about the, the management of, of our, of our garbage. I believe that in Dominica, individual homes and businesses can do much better to assist in the management of garbage in this country. Um, I am for one, I am completely against the construction of these, um, um, concrete, um, areas where people dump the garbage and so on. I personally, I believe the Ministry of Health should ban this and outlaw it. As a matter of fact, it is against the law. Because the, the act says that the Minister for Health is the only authority to declare, um, a site, a dumping site. And by, by building all of these concrete skips, not of this gallivanting across the country, is in fact contrary to law. But, but beyond that, it is creating a serious eyesore and a serious, serious health hazard to all of us in the country. When we keep our garbage there for, for days and, and, and we have, we have cooked food in there, rats are gonna come, cockroaches are gonna come, and this is gonna bring in diseases to us and so forth. So, so, and, and, and in communities, rural communities, communities like ours, we can build a hole back of our yard four feet deep and, and, and put some of the perishable items in there and the teens and the bottles and so on, we can send to labors to dump first. But we shouldn't be sending everything out of our home into labors and so forth. It just doesn't make sense and we're the ones who will suffer for it. So I agree with you that we have to do much better, especially if we're talking about Dominica being the natural island of the Caribbean. You see, we must keep our country clean. And on the point my friend raised about beautification, if you recall some years ago, you know, as a Prime Minister, I, I, I told the nation, let us put aside for Community Day of Service, tarish and cement and steel. And let us focus on beautification and cleanliness of our country. Because we cannot boast our country being a natural island solely on what the good Lord has given to us. We have to enhance it, we have to conserve it, conserve it, we have to preserve it. And beautification is important. And what I already wanted to do, my vision for this beautification campaign was to allow for every village in Dominica to be an attraction by itself. You understand? Because when you, when you, when you have flowers in your yard along the road, it enhances the beauty and the appeal and the cleanliness of this place. So I agree with you, maybe one of the N E P, Dr. Mark, we should maybe employ more people and see how we can, we, we, we can do this. And this is why we have brought in a component under the National Empowering Program for community enhancement. And that has making a huge difference in many communities across Dominica. When the young people, the Middle East people are planting flowers and maintaining it and really bringing a, a, a great appeal to the country. I see it in Tralfalga, so it's something we can extend not only from the junction down in Tralfalga to here, but my view is that we should take it from Barf Estate all the way into the valley and create this, this beautiful place and, and basic plants, indigenous plants that we can plant there that will do well under the condition and really beautify, beautify the country and so on. So we can work on this. And the issue of, um, the juice and the classification, um, that you raised, is a discussion we've been having with the, with the private sector. The reason why there has been, uh, there has been over the years, for an extended period, a high duty on juices was to seek to, one, protect what we have in Dominica, but also to encourage people to, to drink local. It's, it's what I'm saying, to drink local. And the, the more we become a little bit more developed and so forth, is the less we use local stuff because it is easier for us to go at the supermarket and buy some juice and so forth instead of squeezing two limes or, or, or two grapefruits and, and, and make a local juice or some sour syrup and so forth. So you go across Dominica, you see some more cherries wasted and so forth. Or we could pick those cherries and, and make juice and so forth. But it's something we've, we've been, we're talking about, as we recognized two months ago, we increased the, the, um, duty on sweet drinks in, in, in effort to fight non-com可以直接, non-com可以直接, non-com可以直接 diseases in our country. But it's, it's, there has been agreement to reduce on the rates in principle by the cabinet. But we need to discuss with the agroprocessors, with the farmers to see where we are with, um, fruits, where we are with agroprocessing, uh, local juices and to see to what extent we can reduce on the, um, import duties on hundred percent juice. So I agree with you in regards to the principle that you raised about the juices in comparing it. So we, there's no argument in that. The, the argument on the other side is it was done to promote locally manufactured juices and so forth, especially when we had, when we were making the, um, the mix here in Dominica, grapefruit mix and, and, and lime mix in Dominica, concentrate rather, in Dominica to try to promote the local enterprise. I think these are the, the main points that were raised and they show the geoformal land I have addressed and I have given commitment that we will do so in a, in a very respectful manner and engage you in, in discussions, any one of you who would be impacted negatively on each, um, as a result of the geoformal, um, um, program. But one of the points I wanted to make is that, and one of the things I wouldn't commend Dr. Mark for, and sometimes you, you don't see these things walk in the streets, neither can Dr. Mark come and speak about it publicly. But, and I think he made reference to this, um, in his opening remarks about his focus on the health of his constituents. And I have seen occasions when we approve monies for communities, for constituents' empowerment. And while many other parables would take the monies to do roads or something, Dr. Mark would set aside those funds to address health needs of, 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 of citizens. Dr. Mark would set aside those funds to address health needs of, 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 of citizens. And so, so sometimes you may, you, you may see a road bad, but, but Dr. Mark would have taken that money to help a number of constituents address some health needs in a, in a, in an immediate fashion and so forth. And it's something that, that, that is commendable. Because while the roads are important and we must pursue them, the well-being of the individual, because if you have only sick people, they're not going to enjoy the road. But if you can help them regain their health and to maintain their health and, and to beautify themselves and make themselves look pretty and handsome and so forth, with, with, with a smile, these things, while he, he will not speak about it publicly about the individuals that, that, that we help and that he's been helping, I can tell you from where he sits and what I know, is significant cost. It, it, it is going in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that, that, that he sets aside to, to help our, our, our citizens and so forth. So, so sometimes you don't see these things, but it is, it is, it is critical. And, and also, even other person on the front. Himself, while he, he might be a vet, he is very knowledgeable on, 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 on human health. And he's been utilizing his brother, he's been utilizing his sister, he's utilizing his son um, to assist the government in, in, enriching many people. So they, they host visits in this constituency um, where they provide free medical care. Dr. Irving McIntyre has to be highly commended um, for, for, for his efforts there providing free medical care to many people. And, and you see, that is the, that is the essence of representation. You see, that's the essence of representation sometimes that people don't, don't, don't appreciate or don't put a value to it. Because, and, and, and it's because sometimes we do not know other things happening because these things are private. You know, if, if you help somebody on a health matter, that's not for a public discussion or for a neighbor to know, it's between Dr. Mark and yourself and, and the doctor. And so I want to make a point to you this evening. And when you guys sit, the farmers group, Dr. Mark, um, we can commit a grant of ten thousand dollars to get started.
In connection of the question that Leonard asked, what I want to say is that, I guess before I became a, a minister, I was a, a business person. I'm still a, a business individual. And all of us, we have to always look for opportunity. Opportunity is there every single day, every single night. And if you're prepared for it, you're gonna be able to capitalize on it. As Leonard said, many people are interested in healthy, they're interested in, in healthy juices. We have tons and tons of juices that go to waste. You know, we have mangoes that fall. There is an opportunity for you to create your own little business and through the N E P, through the um, small business, to create your model. If you go around Rosa right now, you'll see a guy that has about two little buses. Guess what he's doing? Selling juice. And he's doing a lot of it, he has, he, he must have sat there with no bus. He now has two buses selling the juice. There's a guy in Portsmouth, right? Who was looking for a business and he came across, I think he spoke to one of the persons from the Ministry of Commerce. They have lots of ideas they can help you with. He sells coconut water in a bottle like this. Five dollars for a bottle? I think it's five dollars for the small bottle. In Portsmouth, he's doing, the, the, the officer said eight hundred a day. I still don't want to believe he's doing that many. So I'm going to discount it and say he's doing eight hundred bottles. He sells eight hundred bottles like that every week. That's four thousand dollars a week, times four, that is sixteen thousand dollars on local stuff. So there is a lot of opportunity, look for it, capitalize on it. The same juice you talk about, uh, a big bottle of juice is five, about five dollars. A box of juices, eight or nine dollars. And on that five dollars of juice, you will still make money. So there is a lot of opportunity out there, try to capitalize on it, use a small business and try to create your own destiny.
Okay, thank you very much. Just two last points there. Miss um, Richards mentioned about the road from Trafalgar to Loda. But that's a good point, down the road sometime soon. But I want to fix the Povitas junction first. So we can come up to Loda and then in future we can look at other roads. Because just now, I think of Loda to um, Grand Fortu and all these roads. But let's fix the main ones first, but that's a very good point because it's one, one with Loda. But let's take our time and move and keep what we have first. Because there has been huge investment with these um, the, the roads here in terms of the rim project. And these are things we take for granted, we take those things for granted. Now that the new road is there, you know, no longer an issue. But this road was built under the Dominica Labour Party and we have to understand that and we have a good road. And my friend at the back there, you mentioned about your prescription glasses and whatnot. Yeah, we'll take care of you, my, my dear, we'll take care of you. What you do, you just find a way to speak with me personally and we'll take care of your glasses. Because I'm not gonna call names here, but I do a lot of this kind of programs throughout the valley. I can't call names here because professional ethics, I can't call somebody's name and we'll work with that. But rest assured, I'll continue, as the Prime Minister said, to divert some of my funds for roads into your personal health. Now we'll take the last four or five because we don't want to be keeping you here too long. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, good night to everyone. My question, my question is directed to the Minister of Tourism. Let me, yeah, let me personally thank the government of Dominica and by extension the Minister of Ministry of Tourism for work they have been doing in terms of the T2 area. Uh, recently I know that the Ministry of Tourism provide assistance in training lifeguards at the T2 area. My concern is that, yes, we train the guides. And um, I would really want to see or know the plans of the Ministry of Tourism in terms of like um, every, before every season, you give a refresher to these persons. Because safety and security of our persons, our visitors, and even our locals alike are very, very important. And many would have known of the unfortunate incidents we had in the T2 area. And um, it is because of sometimes, you know, the, the lack of training. If persons are properly trained, I think that they can provide some form of assistance before that ambulance arrives or, or more professional help um, arrives. I also want to ask um, you, Mr. Minister, that if you know the, the, we have a disaster committee up here. And um, I would really ask that if you could assist us in providing us with some equipment. So I am also the, 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 the person in charge of the disaster committee. So if I could ask that I present a project proposal to you in terms of equipment and training for persons who, who, who provide that sort of um, um, security and safety to our visitors and alike the, the locals. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, good evening. Um, my, my, I don't, I don't really have a question, more like a, a kind of a retrosaying. Um, I have a residence less than a hundred meters from the geothermal, the main hall. And it was there before, before all the drilling and everything. And we tried to contact people about, you know, because at night it was lights all, all the time and the drilling vibrating in the house, as a matter of fact. Much of the plastering and all that already cracked up. And we tried to make contact with whoever was involved as to, you know, what, what should we do next, what will happen? Because it cost my family and myself a good amount of money, as a matter of fact. My family had to be displaced because we wasn't able to live there again. And then all of a sudden, everything stopped. So I would like to know really, um, what, what, what is in, what, first of all, how much, how much land are you going to acquire around the central geothermal area? And then um, what, what, who do I have to go to to talk about what already was happened to me because of the project starting? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. You're the food one? I don't force it if you don't have any more.
Um, good night.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr., Mr. Prime Minister, it's a pleasure seeing you here tonight. We have meetings upon meetings and, you know, I've never seen your face in the place. So happy to see, happy to see you here tonight. Mr. McIntyre, happy to see you here also. And the rest of your colleagues or your cabinet members. Mister, Minister, you spoke a while ago about agriculture. And then we had meetings upon meetings here, which of course I believe that tonight would be something vastly different. Because when you have a man like Mr. Scary, when he put his, he put his word then I expect to see positive things happen. Because we had meetings upon meetings there already and promises have been made for, to assist farmers. I am one of those who went to the credit union some years ago, took a loan of five hundred dollars and at the end of it all, you know, I end up getting nothing out of it. I don't know who exactly are the members of the group because I understood that there is a new group that is formed. I don't know exactly who are the members of the group. I would like to know who are the members of the group and what is their plans. You know, and when comes to the agricultural, agricultural sector.
Okay, sir.
And then we, you was talking about the, the road repairs. Couple of years ago, we, we had a meeting here and I asked you in particular and I think Albert Noel, some assistance on that road to Middle East. You know, it's a turning point going, going down by Mafili. For over twenty plus years, I am the only one who have been taking care of, of that road. Couple of weeks ago, in case you have to walk down this area, you will see where I start putting some um, wheel track. I've been collecting materials from whenever they working on the road, collecting materials and putting to the wheel track. Because that area there is very dangerous. Everybody, we are walking on that slope to go down to my house where other people pass. You know, people have been falling on, on it. And I've requested some materials from you. You make promises to me that you will give me materials. Up till now, I haven't get any materials. So I expecting that because of the meeting tonight that you will come up with something proper and I'll be able to get some assistance to assist me on the road.
Thank you, sir.
No, you was talking about housing. Um, I want to thank the government, Mr. Prime Minister. I have heard a lot of what you're doing around the country. God bless you, keep up the good work, you understand? And I, I know when I could see exactly that you are for the poor people and you, you are willing and ready to help Dominica and to help Dominicans. Now me myself, I have my issue. I have two children, I have two children, I have two children, they lives in Godlu. They comes down every season, sometimes twice a year, three times a year. I have a house, my house is not completed. Sometimes when my children come here, I am unable to accommodate them at my home because my home is not completed. They have to be living by their grandmother, thank God for their grandmother because she's the one who been taking, sustaining and taking care of them. I would like an assistance from you also. Okay, that when my children come to help me to complete the house, that when my children come, I could feel comfortable as a father, that they could have a place to rest their head. This is my, should this my country, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mark, a quick question again. Are there any short-term, long-term plans to light the playing field? The Loda playing field, because I've seen lighting going up in different communities. And I think we really need it in Loda. So um, are there any plans to light the Loda playing field?
Good night, Mr. Prime Minister, good night, Mr. Colin McIntyre and the other ministers. I would like you to expand more on the housing project for Loda. And um, what are your plans for the T2 gorge? Because I noticed that at T2 gorge, that there is no light in the facility over there. Also, I live in the vicinity of the area where the geothermal is going up. We have no light in there. Me and my family is within there and I would like help to put in electricity over there for us. Sometime when I go home, a thing taking me when I, I, I know I didn't grow up like that and I cannot put in the lights over there. So I need some help in that area. Also, my house is a disaster.
Okay.
I need help.
Okay. Okay, Mary, I'll address you shortly. Okay, what I'm going to do, I'm going to answer some of the questions here. My friend, my brother who spoke about the, um, his residence close to the geothermal plant and the, what you have suffered when the drilling was taking place. I will come and have a look at your place and we'll discuss how we can do certain things, okay? I'll do that. What's, what's your name, sir? Yeah? Philip Reed.
Sir, excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir. Sure. Okay, okay. My number is two seven five three five nine zero. Let's start to communicate so we can meet, okay? All right. Now, so Mr. Reed and Mr., we'll, we'll see you, we'll see you soon. Now in terms of my friend here, Mr., Mr. Cadet, I must say, if you took a loan of five hundred dollars, realistically, you have two little beds in the back of your yard. But that's, I'm just making a little joke if you're there. But Mr. Alfred Roll, I think is one of the leaders in terms of the farmers group. So I think let's get together, let's put ourselves together so we can look at the benefit. The Prime Minister just pledged ten thousand dollars, that's just ten thousand dollars. But we also have to look at the inputs from our, our, our friends in Morocco who have donated quite a bit, Kingdom of Morocco, who have donated quite a bit of fertilizer to us and we can look at other inputs to assist our farmers in Loda. So you stand to benefit from that, let's get together as a group. We can invite the ministry up there and we can push our program. But you made a reasonable point there. In terms of your housing assistance, we'll, we'll talk a little bit with you. I understand your plight here in terms of not having the family visit and how you feel about not having the children at home. So I respect you on that point. And your, your, um, the road and the little um, wheel tracks you're speaking about there, we'll definitely stretch it and see how we can provide some help in that area. Because even for your, for your dad and the family there, we want to bring that road a little over for them too. So your point is well taken. The, the lighting of the playing field, Mister, yes, very good point. I will bring it up to the Minister of Sports. It's something that we are looking at in, as a phase basis. We have started some of the playing fields already in the, in, in the country. So I'll definitely put our case forward for lighting of the playing field in Loda. I'll put that case forward for sure, yeah. And then the other one was um, Mary and your housing project. And Mary, I mean, we almost, we speak on a daily basis, I understand your situation. I'll, we have a little issue there in terms of location and whatnot, where we want to relocate you. So you're definitely not under the bridge at all, you're way on top with us there. The T2 gorge and the lights, I think the um, okay, sure. The, the Minister of Tourism answered T2 gorge and the lights.
So um, we've been proving and ensuring that. In terms of T2 gorge, it's taking us some time because as you said, um, I think the operator there has a generator operating from time to time at the T2 gorge. However, when we try to get the power from, from dom, like the initial quotation, to put lights at the T2 gorge um, facility was eighty thousand dollars. Okay, so what we've been doing is speaking with them and negotiating to see how we can put in the power there before the season is um, over. In addition to that, we have ideas in terms of um, upgrading the parking area. You know, recently there was an issue of the sewage um, and the smell that was actually um, fixed. Um, there was an area where the, the park, where the buses park, we're gonna be looking at upgrading that area and even the area where you go up to the site to fix on that. In terms of the signage also, there's gonna be signage, new signage that talks about the site, the security of the site, um, making it mandatory for persons to have um, life vests to go into the site. So again, that, that is another opportunity. Maybe the persons who are responsible should take a small business grant, purchase a certain number of live vests. So when persons come there, they can actually rent the live vest to go into the water and thus create jobs for the persons um, in the area. So we will continue putting, doing all we can to upgrade and to improve on the site. And as you said, security and safety of persons are very important. So as soon as you're ready, come on down to the, to the Ministry of Tourism, speak to the community officer and they'll be more than happy to, to work with you.
And then Mister, no, Mister Noel asked a question in terms of the um, the proposal he want to present to the Ministry of, good government really, where we can look at probably, not probably, training some of our locals in terms of disaster as well as lifesavers, what we call them, in the T2 area. I saw some pictures of T2 last week and I mean, I asked, my son sent me some pictures of T2 last week. And it was so stunning, asking what part of the world is that? And he said, come on daddy, that's T2, wow. So we understand the, the, the crowds that flock up the right in terms of the tourists, it's a lot one time on that site. It's a lovely site and I think what we'll do, we'll, we'll take you, we'll, we'll take you, take you upon that and whatever process, proposal you are presenting, even under the N E P. Because there are some of the guys working up there under the N E P already and I think the water there, some of us, we would like to retire. The water has been too cold for them, so we want to bring in a new set. So we look at that, definite. So we look at that, definite, with their suits and whatnot. Well, my people, I would like to spend the night with you because you're quite attentive. You were quite, you have one question, we'll take it, sure. Go ahead, sure. You can start.
Good night, Boswa.
Yeah.
Life for Tourism Minister. Life for the Tourism Minister, Mr. Tong. It not working. Like tour guide being to Boiling Lake. Like you have to pay a thousand five to two thousand dollars to register to be a tour guide. And what? Huh? And, and it doesn't make no sense. Loda is the richest village in Dominica and the French and the Germans are taking over. And they're taking over like Boiling Lake, tour guide. All they want to know is Tito Gorge. When they reach Tito Gorge, from there, they burn their food. They lost, they, they, they break their hand, they do. And we have to go and look for them. That making no sense to me.
That's a very good point. The Minister will address shortly. Mr. Roush.
What, what I think he really wanted to say which he asked me first is that whether it would be possible that it is compulsory that you have a guide to the Boiling Lake. Because I think we, we spoke about that and it is, it is causing some concerns because... Some of the, the clients, I mean, on the trail, some have guides and some do not have. So it's like some saying it not making sense, you know, even pay a guide. And an interesting thing that happened recently, you know, on the block, where the tour guides really wait for the, for their clients. A tour guide told me he was trying to negotiate a trip once. And in the process of negotiation, there came another rental at the back of the one he was already speaking to. And the guy at the back came out and he told the people at the front that he can guide them. I'm talking about another tourist offering to guide another tourist to the Boiling Lake. You know, so this was, you know, a little bit off. You know, so I'm thinking whether that it could be mandatory that, you know, you have a guide to the Boiling Lake, just as, you know, a tour guide is being placed on a bus, you know, for, you know, from the port to any other site. Okay, well, I just finished his question, but I have one more. This one, I guess, is for Big Chief. I applaud the geothermal, you know, effort. My concern is that after this, the seven meg that should be implemented soon, is it possible that, you know, there should be some, some, some serious company, like some cement making factory whereby the entire seven meg could even supply that instead of really transmitting or selling to Dominic, you know, to sell to the, to the consumers of the island? Because I believe, you know, if there is a, let's say, a cement companies, the granite rocks that they use, I mean, it's one of, it's a great asset, you know, to the country. And I'm seeing quite a bit of that is exported, you know, to be burned. And the simple reason is because we do not have enough energy supply. So I believe, I'm not too sure what's in the pipeline, but I think we have to be looking at some serious company like this, especially in lighter event of the geothermal. I have another question, but I'll leave that.
We don't want to go yet.
According to Tristan, I sold piece of land for him. I between Dom Lake and Geothermal in the middle. And I heard Oliver to acquire my land for geothermal purposes. I sold a piece for him and then I would like to know what happening on the land. Comrade, comrade, comrade.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a, yeah, we'll take the last one.
Good night, Prime Minister, Colin. The Prime Minister and Dr. Mack touched on, touched on it already about the housing for the people. Are we going to see a, let's say, a farm, another farm, a housing scheme also for the young people? Because there are some families that really are starting their family at their parents' homes. So we need to move on from there. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent point. Okay, I suspect we have come to the end.
In terms of small business, we, we, I heard you mention a certain amount of money has been placed aside for small business. So in the event that, well, I am interested. I'm not sure who are the other persons that's interested. Where do we meet or, because I tried calling you and I cannot get you on your phone? What is the next step?
Okay. Were you a beneficiary from last time as well? A big deal, want to?
And it's going on. That's correct. So I'm a proud one.
All right, okay. Any other question there before we close up? Yes, sir, there's Roush.
Talking about village expansion, we have that water intake. I think the pipes will lead down since when I was a little girl of five. And right now, we are looking forward to have new pipes because after a show of rain, that's it. And also, looking at infrastructure, we have the Golgotha area being utilized now by certain peoples. So we'd like to see water, telephone, lights being placed on this area where the village is being expanded. And my friend Jason just took my last point. The youth, they are starting their families at their parents' home and I think something like a housing scheme or house allocation should be made for these young people. You want me to say no?
Okay.
Excuse? I don't know what if it will help to increase the population, I don't know. And what plans you have for the youth re-education? Because I, I observe in Loda, there is no extra activities for youth re-education or when they have come out from schooling in Dillon. If anything, they are just running around. So what plans for the youth in education?
Okay, I'll address those, I think I can answer and the Prime Minister handle them and then we'll move from there. Okay. Seeing that you asked the last question, I'll start with you first. The, what are the plans for youth in education? This government, the Dominican Labour Party, we have provided numerous opportunities for our young people. I don't think any government in the past has done what we have done for young people and the opportunities, even for going abroad to study. So I would like to say to you, the government will help as much as it can and we have been a lot. But we want the parents to hold their own too. The parents have to hold their own. The government, right now, we have to take care of the elderly, the young, the middle aged. I mean, how much more we can ask the government to do for us? But Mac, you, I'm not saying that the government is not committed, you don't misunderstand me. We are committed, but we want to have a partnership with the parents and let's use the opportunity to really, you know, move out to and forward. I would urge all parents here, including, Mr. Richards, a crazy question here is, let's take advantage of the opportunities. There are new, I posted just yesterday, so a lot of the areas, various governments are offering opportunities for our students to study. Governments have pledged scholarships for our people. Let's take advantage of it right now. There are a number of people from Loda have been to Hawaii and China studying, taking advantage of it. And I urge every single parent here to take advantage of the opportunity because we are providing opportunities for the people. That's one. The second one is the small business opportunity as mentioned here, my friend. Yes, I know you have benefited tremendously and I'm happy that you said you are proud beneficiary of it. We have some funds right here with us. We will, at the end of the meeting, we'll get the funds into the right hands in terms of folks who are interested in it. I know we can expand our business here because Loda is primarily tourism, little agriculture or little shops and some bit of manufacturing, just a small amount. So I have some funds in me here. The Prime Minister has pledged a certain amount of resources here for that. We will deal with that. So you're welcome on that one, my dear. Don't be scared at all. The water intake, the wasco, I'm aware of the condition of the water here. I spoke with Mr. Hettinghoff not too long ago and I, if I can recall clearly, we are looking at a plan for revamping the water supply system in Loda. It's a bit old for sure. I've done some work with it. Every now and again, we get a little problem, but I'm going to look at that one for sure. Mr. Hettinghoff has mentioned some improvement plans right. Even looking at water harvesting in providers there for feeding some of the lower areas right to, or even higher up Loda. So we are, we are on that for sure. The other one was Golgotha area, well, we'll have to deal with that. The question about the, the young people studying homes in their mothers', their parents' home, that's, that's a true story. We work with that. Well, the Prime Minister has pledged a certain amount for housing. So what we'll do, we'll repair some of the homes, maybe put a little piece on the home. But by the next time, we hope to maybe look at the possibility of doing something bigger for here. But let's start with the three hundred and see how far we can take it. But your point you raised, Jason and teacher Richards here, I will put a case forward to the government for some more additional type of programs. I won't mention them here. I think that's about it in terms of that. Mr., the Prime Minister and Mr. Tong will address the rest.
So with regards to the question on the tour guides and on the trails, this is very, a great, a greater concern because the safety, the safety of persons using the trail is paramount. And as you said, if a person goes up and they're not sure what they're doing, it means they still wouldn't have to more than likely call a local to come and rescue them. In addition to that, remember I spoke about the four pillars and one of them is the experience. You want when someone goes there, they have a fantastic experience because they have a tour guide who's explaining certain things to them. So we need to have a meeting with the various stakeholders, you as, as tour guides, to see how we can come together and discuss it and see if we can move forward with a, with a resolution as to how we move forward. But it's something that we must discuss with as many people as possible before we just make a decision. Another thing we can do, we, we, we're looking forward to doing is also an app for the tour guides. So when a person wants to come to the Trafalgar Falls, they can, all the, all the tour guides in this particular area can be registered, almost like Uber. So we can look at an Uber type of app that will allow the tour guides in a particular area to maximize on getting business. But at the same time too, they have to raise the level and provide the best possible experience. So maybe within the next month, we can sit down and begin discussing the Tito Gorge situation. Not the Tito Gorge, the Boiling Lake and tour guides. Thank you.
Just to, just to the point made by Dr. Mack in respect to housing. What I would suggest is that a comprehensive assessment of the housing needs be done and that will inform the number of interventions which we will have to make in the community. All I will say at this time is that we are firmly committed to assisting with the improvement of the housing situation in Loda. So I am, I'm on standby, so to speak, to be informed of the costs going forward with that. Regards to the strong point raised by Alfred about focusing the seven megawatt plant, maybe specifically on a particular enterprise. While we may not necessarily be able to do that, but we, based on advice, our review, that this will spur interest in manufacturing and agro processing and, and special projects like the one you mentioned, is something certainly will be in a better position based on independent advice to, to, to be able to attract those kind of ambitions to our country. Because you, you're right. Energy cost is the biggest cost factor to, to, to many enterprises, whether you're tourism or manufacturing, the cost of energy is huge. And, and, and anyway, it is huge. Far more when we are paying much more than most people for energy in our country. And this is why geothermal is very important. If you actually live here tonight, remember, anything I have said about geothermal is, it is this. It is about your land and those of you whom the government may have to acquire from. I give you the assurances, again, that we will treat you with utmost respect and ensure that if your lands have to be acquired by the state to allow the geothermal project to be, to be, to be successful, we will ensure that you get a fair market price for your land, okay? And, and that you are not, you are not left standing without proper compensation. Obviously, you'll have to negotiate between yourself and the state and, and the state agents who are appointed by the, by the law to negotiate with you. But while we, while we have in the government system based on advice from the experts, a general understanding and appreciation for the lands that we impacted, the cabinet is very firm on that we should not be engaging this in a, in a public domain until and unless we speak to the individual landowners themselves, one on one, to, to let them appreciate one. Because the acquisition of a land, this is not the kind of territory where land, land is owned communally. This is where everybody has their own independent certificate of title. So it is not a matter for the whole community, for the government to engage the whole community on someone's private land. This is why it's important or to respect that the government meets with that landowner privately. Say, "Look, you have two acres, we will have to take point five from you for this purpose and so on. This is what the market price is. What do you think? If you agree, then we send an agreement. If you don't agree, then negotiation ensues further." So until we get to a point where we can agree on a mutually acceptable price. But for me personally, and I, I am, I am leading the charge in the government on this and the government in that particular matter must be, must be, must, must, must be very sensitive to the concerns of residents because land is very important to many people in this world. You see what I'm saying? And, and, and if, 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 if you have a piece of land and you, there's a, there's a possibility that it will be taken away from you, though you be compensated, you will still feel away and so forth. And therefore, we have to be able to work together in a mutually respectful atmosphere to achieve an end. At the, at the end of the day, each of us will be making an extraordinary contribution to what is a very important project. Help change the economic fortunes of Dominica. And, and, and I said earlier, if you look at, if you read the article for consultation document from the IMF, you see where they're saying to the government, geothermal is critical to addressing a number of issues confronting the economy of Dominica. Because energy cost is huge, both for domestic users and for the business private sector community. So this is why we have set aside forty-five million dollars from the Economic Synergy Synergy Investment Program to invest full bank additional financing and hiring.